Many people don't know about the agency, the valuable services, the important services that we provide, and that's one of the reasons that I'm here tonight, to try to spread the word, and one of the reasons we changed our name is to try to help people understand what we're all about. So let me tell you first, a little bit about our history. In 1968, a group of concerned citizens got together, they were concerned about their children, their young children who had behavioral and emotional problems, and they started the first Children's Mental Health Center in Niagara, called the Niagara Child Development Center, or NCDC. Some of you are probably familiar with that name. In 1976, another group of citizens got together and said our teens need the same type of service, and they formed the Niagara Center for Youth Care, or NCYC. Again, some of you, I'm sure, are familiar with that name. In April 2004, these two agencies came together to form Niagara Child and Youth Services, or NCYS, which was now a full Children's Mental Health Center from birth to the 18th birthday. We have grown over the years to become the primary provider of services to over 4,300 kids and families in the region last year. A couple weeks ago, January 26, we launched a new name, Pathstone Mental Health. Let me tell you a little bit about what the name represents. The word "Pathstone" represents the guidance along the pathway to improve mental health for the children and youth that come to us. Mental health was purposefully included in the name because we have to reduce the stigma around mental health. It is the main reason children and adults do not reach out for help, because they are afraid of being stigmatized, of being discriminated against, and I'm going to talk to you a little bit tonight about that. And you each have a copy of our strategic plan. In the bottom left-hand corner, you'll see the logo, three little stepping stones that go along with the name Pathstone Mental Health. They represent strong, solid steps and important milestones in a person's journey towards enhanced mental health when they come to us for service. One in five children, youth, and adults will have a mental illness. Not sure if you're aware of that or not. That's 20% of our population. Seventy-five percent of all mental illness begins during childhood or adolescence. Yet many children and youth are not getting the help they desperately need and so deserve, and one of the main reasons is the stigma. Stigma is so strong in Canada that in 2008, in a national survey, one in four Canadians said they were afraid of people with a mental illness. Only 50% of the respondents, 50% of Canadians, said they would tell a friend if a family member was diagnosed with a mental illness. Even more shocking is only 16% said they would marry somebody if they knew they had a mental illness. Yet 20% of the population has a mental illness. Forty-two percent said they would no longer socialize with a friend who was suddenly diagnosed with a mental illness. The impact of mental illness is alarming in our country. As I mentioned, one in five Canadians, all ages, are affected with a mental illness. To give you the enormity of that, to put it into perspective, that's twice the number of Canadians that will have diabetes, and four times the number of Canadians that will have breast cancer. And we are very concerned about those two illnesses. So the question is, why are we not doing more about mental illness when the numbers are so, so great? We lose, and this was statistics that came out nationally this summer, 51 billion, not million, but billion dollars a year in lost productivity due to mental illness, and that's mainly due to two very common forms of mental illness, depression and anxiety. Now, one in five kids, I already mentioned, will have a mental illness, but only 25% of them will get the help they need. That means 75% will not. In Niagara, that 75% translates into 15,000 children and youth that are not getting the help they deserve that will change their lives, and mostly because of stigma. The impact of that is that suicide is the second leading cause of death among 15 to 18-year-olds in Canada. And the Commission on Mental Health of Canada said last year that 15 to 24-year-olds have the highest level of unmet mental health needs of any age group in the country. Although you have many different images, I'm sure, about mental illness. We're inundated in the media about mental illness, and unfortunately, last month, there were two tragedies, one in Canada, one in states, related to people that had very serious mental illness. Mental illness is very much like cancer. There are many different types of cancer. Most of them curable today, only a few of them that are real immediate death sentence. Mental illness, there are many forms of mental illness, but the majority of them are highly treatable, and for kids, the majority of kids with a mental illness have depression, anxiety, ADHD, or conduct disorder. And for adults, the majority of adults that have mental illness have nothing to do with this scary, violent behavior we see in movies and in the media. They have two simple mental illnesses, depression and anxiety. Depression and anxiety. We all know in this room, people who have mental illness, but we might not know it, because they often hide it. They are friendly and smiling at work as though everything is fine, and they go home absolutely exhausted, because they're living in a closet, hiding it, because they're afraid of being discriminated against. And the important thing to know is treatment works. We have to measure, because we're funded by the provincial government, we have to measure every child that comes in, the intensity of their mental illness, and we have to use the same measurement, the scientific measurement, to show what the intensity is when they finish service. And not only for our agency, but across the province, 75% of children who receive help, receive help and move on with their lives really successfully. The help works. We know treatment works. As an agency, Pathstone provides a wide variety of services to children, youth, and families. We work in childcare centers, we work in high schools, we work in elementary schools, we work with all ages. Last year, as I mentioned, we worked with over 4,300 children and youth and their families in the region. Niagara Falls has our second largest population. It's the second largest population in the region. 19.2% of our clients last year came from your community. That was over 820 kids that we worked with. And that's only 25% of the kids that require services and deserve it. We have made some major changes, and one of the things some of you probably do know about our service, or think you know, is there are long wait lists, so why bother trying to get service? And that has been a reputation and a reality of our agency for many years. I'm not here to talk about the challenge in getting dollars. I'm here to tell you that we've done something about X. We streamlined the way we deliver services. We now triage our kids. Not every child needs the same level of service, so we are now providing them with the service they need. We triage them as soon as they come in from Contact Niagara as a referral into three different streams. Some kids get one to three, and their families get one to three sessions, and that's all they need. They move on with their lives happy. Some children and the majority of our clients receive what's called Brief Solution Focus Service now. That's 10 to 14 sessions, 10 to 14 weeks, and they again move on successfully and carry on with their day-to-day lives. Only a small portion of our clients receive what we call Full Service, because there are very complex mental health needs, and they might be in service for a year or longer. Because we've done this triaging, we are reducing our serious waitlist. Majority of kids now receive service anywhere from three to 14 weeks. We have been shortening the waitlist, which used to be at four to six months, down for a majority of our clients, 80% of our clients, in the next two to three months. Our goal is to have them wait a maximum of six weeks, and many of them less. 80% of our clients will receive service within six weeks, and we're on track to meeting that goal. We have opened six satellite offices in December, January, one of them here in Niagara Falls, so clients don't have to now travel all the way to Thorold from no matter what corner of the region you're in. They can receive service as close to their home community as possible, again, making it more accessible. I've talked to you a lot about stigma. Stigma is the main reason kids and families are not getting help. It's also the main reason adults don't get help sometimes. We're designing a 12-month-long anti-stigma campaign. We're just looking for funding now to implement it. We have a 25 committee made up of community members that have been designing the campaign. So I'm here to ask you a couple of things to help us on this campaign. When you see it in the coming months, begin talking about mental illness. You don't have to wait till then, you can talk about it now. We need to blow the lid off the stigma around mental illness, so kids will reach out, their parents will reach out, and get the help they need when they need it, when it's easier to treat them and help them move on. So please remember, we are all affected by mental illness. One in five incidence rates means that we all have friends, family, colleagues, community members that we know, neighbors that we know, who are living in silence and afraid of speaking out, because they're struggling, usually with depression or anxiety or other mood disorders that are highly treatable, and they can use our support. Forty years ago, we didn't talk about cancer, because we were afraid it was a death sentence. Thirty years ago, a Canadian hero, Terry Fox, blew the lid off stigma around cancer. We don't talk about the big C anymore. We talk about cancer. We know it's treatable. There are millions and millions of dollars have been spent on research. We have to do the same thing with mental health. So please, help us make it easier by talking about mental health, by supporting people. If we just have it as part of our general conversation, people will come out and start talking about it. It happens to me almost every day, whether I'm in a store, or I'm talking to somebody, and they ask me what I do, and I talk to them about it, and I normalize it, and sure enough, somebody in the crowd talks about their own mental illness challenges in the past or current. It happens almost every single time. So please help us make talking about mental illness as common as every other physical illness we talk about. And I'm going to leave you with one last request. Please mark June the 3rd in your calendars. June the 3rd, we are going to be having the Second Annual Hope Award Event, where we recognize an individual in our community who has made a real difference for kids with mental illness. Last year, our inaugural event, we awarded Dr. Robin Williams, our Medical Officer of Health, with the inaugural Hope Award. This year, we are going to be awarding Connie Castanzo, the First Executive Director, for the first Children's Mental Health Agency in the region with the award. And to make an entertaining evening for everybody, Rick Mercer is going to be the entertainment for the night. So we hope you will join us and come out to the event. It's going to be held here in Niagara Falls at Club Italia, and we look forward to having all of you as our guests that night. If there's time, I gladly answer any questions, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Katsoff. That was very, very informative, and I understand what you speak of, because as you said, it wasn't long ago, people didn't speak of their depression problems. They just lived and suffered in silence. Maybe you could suggest, I didn't notice real quickly, running through what you left us here, the Strategic Plan Annual Report, are there any indicators or signs, I know you mentioned depression and anxiety, but are there some specific things we could look for, especially in children, to identify, so you can kind of nip it in the butt type thing? Maybe you can help us out with that answer?
If children suddenly are struggling with schoolwork, and they're doing fine, if they're suddenly not wanting to get together with friends, if they're suddenly sleeping a lot, not doing the regular things, and not wanting to go to the house, if they're suddenly scared about getting on a bus, or getting in the car, or going on a ferry, sudden changes in behavior, that's really what to look for. And all anyone has to do is call Contact Niagara. If I can, I'll give you the number, so it'll be recorded. Contact Niagara, 1-800-933-3617. They are the central intake agency for all children's services in Niagara region. The government set them up about eight years, 18 years ago, and with one brief phone call, they will do an intake and talk to you about, and ask you questions about the child's behavior and your concerns, and then they will send that file to us within a week. If there is a serious concern, a high-risk concern, a parent is concerned about the child might be suicidal, or is hurting themselves, or not eating, that will be considered high risk, and they will send that to us the same day, and we will respond. There's no waitlist for kids that are concerned, high-risk, by that one phone call. So we will see them within a couple of days. But that's the simplest way to access our services.
I know a big difference too, between seeing someone with a broken arm, or someone with a broken spirit, you know, one's not as easily identifiable. I don't know, were there any comments or questions from anyone around the council, Council of Morocco?
I know Alice very well, and the organization, I just want to say thank you very much for sharing your story with us. It's a story that we don't probably want to hear much of, but I think it's important that we do. And like you said, you reach out to people that have cancer, but you tend to shy away from those people that have mental illness. And I think that you're doing a wonderful job, and I look forward to attending your Hope Awards again this year. It was excellent last year, and I hope that some of the councillors and staff will take advantage of that presentation. It's a great evening, and it's always so dope. So good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Wang?
Yeah, I'm just really happy that we have a local organization joining the nationwide movement about talking about it, or whatever it was that Bell, you know, it's very interesting. I had a conversation with somebody today, saying one of my elder daughter's friends came up to her about his schizophrenia, and I realized what I said. It's almost like being gay used to be, have a stigma attached to it. It no longer does, and this is the same sort of thing this chap came out about his mental illness. And just like we've left the stigma against gays by the wayside, I think we're going to do that with this as well, and thank you for your organization's work.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, and Mr. Katsoff, if you could formally send an invitation to council, we'd be happy to share that with everybody by way of email.
We definitely will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to planning matters, I would ask the city clerk to, or our deputy clerk, to introduce the next item on the agenda.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a proposed three-story commercial building at 5547, 5559 Portage Road, and part of 5895 North Street. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Thursday, January 13, 2011, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment, participate in any site plan process if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Clerk, I would now ask the planning director to explain the purpose and reason for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll give a quick synopsis of this application. It's AM 2011-001. This is on Portage Road. You can see a picture of the site here. It currently has a former flower shop, Blumenbasket, on the property. It is the intention that this building will be demolished for a proposed three-story medical clinic. That's certainly the proposal we have tonight. Now, this gives you an idea as to the properties that are involved in the rezoning. Currently, right now, the Blumenbasket is a commercial zone, neighborhood commercial zone. The north is residential, multiple family, and the back portion is institutional. You can see by the nature of the land uses, are predominantly residential to the north and to the south. We've got the former St. Joe's High School to the west, which is now being used as an adult learning center, and we have the current Greater Niagara General Hospital to the east. This shows you a site plan that we've been tossing about for a little bit. The revised proposal was a building envelope further to the west on the site. We have been working with the proponent to look at moving that up closer to Portage Road. We were concerned about the setback from Portage Road. We're recommending a minimum six-meter setback. We are also concerned with the neighbor's residential development to the south. It's currently a two-story building. We've recommended a minimum of four-and-a-half meters setback there, and actually, the residence to the north is quite a large, probably a 15-meter distance between where the building would be and the property line. So there's quite a bit of setback to the north, and we've tried to make the privacy issue of this residence, address that by moving the building up, and therefore, the backyards would be, would be basically no buildings. This gives you an aerial shot of what we have, what we're dealing with. Currently, the Blumenbasket building there, you've got nearby residents to the north and to the south, and the vacant lands to the back that'll be predominantly parking, and you're just right across the road from the entrance of the GNGH hospital. So for a medical clinic, you would tend to think that this would be a primary location for such a facility. Just giving you some quick background, we're dealing with a property that's 0.25 hectares in size, and I did mention the current zoning of the properties, and the rezoning that's going to, is being requested, is to a site-specific general commercial GC zone. And on December of 2010, this council considered and refused a zoning amendment which involved a proposed five-story medical building. And that was also staff's recommendation, and currently, we've got that proposal changed, where the proponents are now proposing a three-story medical clinic. There was an open house meeting, which is part of our natural, our normal standards that we go through these days, and that was attended by four residents, two residents to the north, and two residents immediately to the south. These residents did note that they preferred far better the three-story building than the five-story proposal that was dealt with earlier. Now, they still had questions about the architecture of the building, snow clearing, fencing, landscaping, and lighting, and these issues will be dealt with at the site plan review stage. Now, the owners were open to discussing the site plan details with the residents, which is a nice option to have, considering that, you know, they've, the owners have given the neighbors a chance to get involved with the type of board-on-board fence, for example, and also some of the landscaping features that are being proposed. Now, there was some concern about a methadone clinic, and I attended that open house meeting on January 27, and Dr. LaRue, who is the owner of the building, along with his wife, assured us that there is no plans for a methadone clinic. He will have his own clinic in the building, and he often does a lot of work at the hospital. And the primary advantage of this facility is being able to run across the road essentially, and serve his people at the hospital. In addition to the petition that was dealt with earlier by the opponents, there was also a 400-name petition supported by, or made in support of the medical building. The official plan is, designates the land as residential and also Special Policy Area Number One, and what the Special Policy Area does is allows for compatible uses that are ancillary to the hospital. The new development is designed and will achieve compatibility, we feel. It'll deal with the building mass, we've dealt with the height gradation, and we're proposing some setbacks, and the building itself will be used for medical offices, but it'll also be used for a small pharmacy, a coffee shop, and basically, that's the three types of uses that will be in the building. Now, the zoning of the property, again, is site-specific, general commercial. The height of the building will be, is proposed at 12 meters. Currently, the zoning on the property allows for 10 meters, so it's a minor increase to the height that can be developed today. We've provided some, or suggested some additional side yard setbacks to mitigate some of the potential conflicts or impacts. The following is the recommendations, recommended standards of the bylaw amendment. It's a side yard setback of 4.5 meters, a six-meter front yard setback from Portage Road, three-meter landscape strip along the front of the property, a 1.5-meter landscape strip along the lot lines, the board-on-board fence at a minimum height of 1.8 meters, and the loading space that can be reduced from nine meters to six meters. The site plan control, again, will deal with items like lot grading and servicing, buffers, fencing, and tree planting, and again, you know, hopefully, we can get the residents, if this is approved, to be involved in that process. The applicant has indicated that there may be parking control gates installed, and I know that was an issue, again, was parking, so that'll be controlled as part of the onsite development. As far as strategic priorities of council, this application will satisfy the priorities. They intensify medical services in close proximity to the hospital. It will attract physicians to the city to better serve the area residents and take advantage of the existing infrastructure capacities. In conclusion, the applicant has requested the zoning amendment for the three-story building and ancillary uses. We've dealt with the proposed height. We've recommended some additional setbacks, and the facility will enhance the medical services in close proximity to the hospital. So it's our recommendation that council approve the application to rezone the lands to a general commercial, site-specific zoning to allow a three-story medical building. And that, Mr. Mayor, is my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bolabook. Are there any members of council that have any questions? Counselor Thompson?
Yes, through you to the planner. Zoning residential apartment 5B, density RB5B, can you explain that?
Yes. The residential was, I guess, a long-term planning scenario for this area. The 5A is to the north, and that allows for multiple family at a density of 50 units per hectare. Generally, it's, pardon me?
Stories.
We're looking at two to three stories, three stories, 10 meters. I did want to point out to members of council that the residence to the north is two-and-a-half stories currently, and there will be about a 14, 15 meter, just from the property line to where the actual medical building will be. So that's a fair significant buffer. And we've tried to address, again, the residence to the south as well. Now, that's a 5AB. It's a little higher density that's allowed to the south. It's just the form that we have in our zoning, the 5A and the 5B.
Three stories, Allison.
Yes.
Three stories.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Wang?
Just a question to Mr. Bolabook. So this building is expected to draw physicians to the community. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, it will. I know there are a number of physicians that will be part of this medical clinic. I have been advised by our Dr. LaRue that they will be coming from other parts of the region, Welland, for example. So yes, there will be additional medical clinicians.
So then, this is the solution to our doctor recruitment efforts. All we needed to do is build it, and they will come. Okay, well, this probably explains then why that four- Okay, well, this probably explains then why that 400-name petition is comprised primarily of the signatures of people from Forty, Report, Culver, St. Catharines, Niagara, Lake, Welland, Wayne Fleet, who really object to the town council disallowing consent to the five-story building. Now, I understand, because I really couldn't figure out why we have 400 signature petition to address to Niagara Falls Town Council from people who don't even live in the city.
Are there any other comments? Okay. Members of the public, you're advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referrals that it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheet will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant that would speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Yep, okay, we've got you, sir. If you would come down, state your name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name's Rob Moreau. I live at 5910 Prospect Street, which is to the north of this property, right beside the walkway that goes into the schoolyard, just the east of that. Okay? Originally, their first application they had for the five-story building, we urged you guys to deny that application because it was really infringing on our privacy, which we really value our privacy a lot. Our backyard there is very nice and private. Okay? Now, they produced their application to a three-story building, but they've pushed it back closer to my property. It overlooks my property as much or more than the other proposal did. So, I urge you, please, don't take away our privacy. Deny this application. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yep, we had someone else in the back there? Yes, sir? Come on forward, if you could state your name and your address, please.
My name is Andrew Van Kasky. I'm at 5904 Prospect Street, next door to Ron. And our, both our properties are going to be totally involved in the southern, or the northern side of that parking lot. And from what I can hear so far from the applicant, that he's made no different improvement from the last time he was here, as far as we are concerned, which is our privacy and everything else. And I think that we can go back and find out from the submissions we made the last time we were here, they're same. There's no difference. And they have not made any recommendations to help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yep, if you can come up, please state your name and your address.
My name's Bill French. I live at 5928 Prospect Street. What we have is a really nice neighborhood. We're northwest of the site. We're separated by the walkway to the school. What this will, in effect, do is put a parking lot in our backyard. So, I'm concerned about the high volume of traffic coming and going throughout the day, and as Rob said, taking away from the privacy of our homes. We'd really prefer not to have to deal with this issue, which I'm sure is going to be an ongoing problem with us having, basically, cars coming and going in our backyards. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yep. Is there anybody else with any other unique? We know the privacy issue. If there's anything else, please bring it forward. State your name, sir, and your, your address, please.
Jim McBurney, 5533 Portage and 5525. Mayor Deodatian, councilmember of council. Since last spoke to you regarding the proposed medical building, be built on Portage Road directly beside my residence. We've had another public meeting, of course, January 27th. At that meeting, instead of my concerns, instead of my concerns which I had voiced at our last council meeting minimizing there, now intensified. We, we're still very unclear as to the, this five-story issue. I understand it's been appealed to the OMB?
We'll, we'll get that answer when the applicant comes up.
Okay, well, one thing I wanted to ask, you know, to clarify exactly what height we are dealing with. Also, plans showing weren't, weren't that what the building would look like. And in fact, I brought that up at the, at the meeting on the 27th. It's just very unclear as to whether, you know, whether it's going to fit into the And I'm glad we had clarification, clarification about the methadone clinic. I had wanted to mention that, but I won't. If that's fine, that's, that issue's been done. But we're a little concerned about longer hours and weekends, et cetera, you know, because they stated before that it wouldn't be used at night, and it wouldn't be used during the weekends, so much for traffic, you know. I want to get clarification on that. The Elefantes couldn't attend tonight, but I, they, they sent a letter in there, the next immediate property to the proposed, proposed. And they've, they've expressed their concerns the same. So, that's basically all I got to say. I'm not, I'm not for it, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I would ask if you have any new objections to please bring those forward.
Hi, my name is Jeff Erda. I live at 3446 Noridham Court in Niagara Falls. I'm standing up here in support of the building. I'm a medical professional in Niagara Falls. I own a physical therapy clinic in Niagara Falls. And looking at the site plans for, for where this building is proposed, I think really the proximity to the hospital allows for, you know, complimentary and supplementary services to be optimized in this city. I find it real difficulty with, in my practice where I'm at now, on Montrose Road, to have that continuity of care with many medical practitioners. And I think residents of Niagara Falls do kind of, you know, feel that same way as well. I think that's potentially why the petition was so high in a such short period of time is that, you know, having to drive from Montrose Road, you know, to somewhere in Welland and then to see a surgeon, I mean, that just becomes extremely detrimental to people who, at times, you know, have had surgeries and different medical procedures done to travel that distance with. And a lot of times, they will not access those services because really, the efficiency in doing so is very limited for them. You know, I think it's very important, especially for the elderly population of this community, to have those services be very centralized in that manner. I think also, too, you know, looking at council's push for, you know, greener solutions in the city, I think a big aspect of having everything in a close proximity would be less carbon emissions in, in the environment. People trialing around Niagara Falls. My clinic has approximately 70 people that pass through the doors each day. Having to go from myself to see a surgeon, to see the practitioner, to a pharmacy, that's a lot of emissions into our community. I think this will be another step in centralizing our services to really help reduce that as well. Also, too, I think, you know, we've, we've heard in the presentation about attracting other medical professionals to this area. I did unofficial poll at my clinic today, and approximately 25% of people that I treated today alone had no family doctor, and then they could not find one. So, I think attracting any type of medical professional to this area would definitely be, you know, supportive of the residents in this community already. I mean, we're, we're definitely under-serviced area in that way. And I think this is just a step in being proactive in, in addressing these, these issues. Also, too, as well, I think it's a, it's a manner of being very innovative in the sense of the changes that are happening in the medical community with the local, the lens at how they're redistributing services here in Niagara Falls. Whether they keep the Niagara Falls General Hospital as a first full-service hospital or not, I think this just facilitates the community's, you know, awareness and accessibility to that hospital. And hopefully, this will be another step in showing the lens that the, you know, the city of Niagara Falls is willing to put the steps in process, similar to St. Catharines, to, to keep that a full functioning hospital. So, I mean, my recommendation would be to approve this plan, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that had any comment? Okay. Seeing none, council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative. If you could state your name, Mr. Brady?
Good evening. My name is Rick Brady. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors, and senior staff and the public. I'm a professional land use planner, and I've been asked to take over this file from Mr. Fisher, in part to assist in the land use issues, but also in part in anticipation that there may be an Ontario Municipal Board hearing on the project. And yes, I will answer that question right up front. Yes, there has been an appeal of the decision that was made of council the last time that Mr. Fisher was here to the Ontario Municipal Board of the original project. And if this project is approved, then obviously, there's no need for that, that appeal to continue on. Mr. Bollebrook and the planning staff have attempted to broker a compromise between my client's interests and those of the neighbors, and I might add, of those of the city, because there really are three groups that have an interest in this particular building and the type of development that should be in close proximity to your hospital. There's been, as it's been mentioned earlier, significant changes in height and setbacks, which have resulted from the discussions with the neighbors. And I'm just going to flip. The privacy issue has been addressed in that the setback, as shown, particularly the south setback, has been increased to 4.5 meters, which I might add is significantly more than you would expect for a building of, of three stories in height. But nonetheless, it will fit on the property, and there's also a landscape strip in there. So, what you will have is not only a strip of landscaping in there, you'll also have grass and a distance to, to help in terms of mitigate the issues. There's a fence that's been suggested, and it's a board-on-board fence. And it's also been suggested that the type and quality of the, of the fence can be discussed at the site plan stage, and I'll, I'll get more to the site plan in a moment. We're talking about a fence, basically, that runs along the south and around, basically, everything but Portage Road would be fenced on this particular property. You wouldn't want to fence off the, the frontage of the property from Portage Road, but there would be a landscaping area along Portage, with the exception of the driveway that comes in. To carry on from the point that was raised by the gentleman who was, who spoke just prior to me, medical clinics need to be adjacent to hospitals to be very, very successful. My own family doctor is in a medical clinic which is immediately adjacent to the hospital. And this is, this is the, a normal kind of consideration. I can tell you that St. Catharines is proactively zoning property in proximity, that is, immediately adjacent to the new St. Catharines Hospital, so that clinics of this type will not even require a zoning bylaw amendment to be able to be built in proximity to the new hospitals in St. Catharines. So, other communities are making sure that medical practices are being able to be developed in close proximity to the hospital. You have, in this particular case, some medical practices that are behind the hospital, but I can tell you that that's full. And I can tell you that my client will come up in a moment and present to you, there's, there was some commentary about the petition that was provided on this. He will provide to you a petition of doctors, medical doctors that practice in Niagara at the present time, that support this particular facility. I'll let him speak to that briefly, but there's 31 doctors who have stated this is the place that medical practices need to be, if they're expected to continue to serve the public. It was mentioned, I'm going to be very brief on the topic. This whole idea of methadone clinic never was going to happen, clearly is off the table. We're not talking about having a methadone clinic on this particular site. I think there may have been some confusion because the word clinic is used as a part of the, of the application. My client is an orthoped, and in, in, in their practice, they have clinics in association with their, with their, with their practices. Once the zoning is in place, my client will employ an architect to design the building and layout in accordance with the zoning that hopefully will be passed this evening. This will result in a detailed site plan, which will involve the type of landscaping, the actual type of fencing that would be constructed, although board-on-board fence has been mentioned, but the actual design of the fencing. It will also include such things as the, as the type of materials that will be used for the building itself. And staff has mentioned to you, and I will reiterate, that my client has said that they'd be happy to talk to the neighbors about it. In fact, I'm going to ask you to make a slight change to the recommendation of staff this evening, and I'm going to suggest that you direct staff to involve the neighbors in the site plan process. And therefore, it's clear to the neighbors that staff has been given the direction. It's, it's one thing for me to stand up here and say that my client is willing to do so, and he is. But nonetheless, the direction of, of the council to the staff to ensure that that occurs, I think, would be of, of importance. And certainly, some of the issues that have been raised by some of the members that have been here this evening can be fully addressed and, and dealt with at that stage. I think I have made my comments. I would like you to support the application this evening. I'm, I'm going to just stand aside for a moment. I understand there may be some questions, but what I would like, if it's acceptable to the chair, that my client come up, make his brief comments about the petition, hand you out that petition, and then perhaps I could try to answer any questions, if that's acceptable.
Yep, that'd be fine.
Good evening, Lord Mayor, councilmembers. I'm just back to address council again, as in our previous meeting. We had a previous meeting.
Could you please state your, your name, sir?
I'm Dr. LaRue. I'm the applicant, an orthopedic surgeon applying for the, for the amendment. At previous council meeting, we had a proposed development of medical office building across the front entrance of the GNGH Hospital. We wanted council to at least listen to the proposed plan, but it was very hastily revoked by council. In our previous meeting, I made a passionate plea to allow needed development next to our current hospital. This was matched by equally passionate statement by Counselor Wang against it. Reasons given for that, however, still escapes me and more than 400 petitioners, as well as 31 doctors at Niagara Falls Hospital, as to why that happened. To give further clarity about 408 petitioners from the region, if Counselor Wang is aware, the reason for that is that the whole plan is to centralize orthopedic surgery main center at Niagara Falls Hospital. In other words, we will be serving the region. That's why the region's people have petitioned you to allow facilities that's needed for the region's people, because we want to be a regional orthopedic hospital. We don't want that to be taken away as well. Now, I now again ask council to allow us a much smaller downsized development, which will only be a shadow of what is needed by our community. Our community has given an election mandate, a large petition, as well as a petition by the medical doctors working in Niagara Falls Hospital at the moment. This is the petition, and I'll also circle copies of the petition, just if I can take the first ones, the original, those are copies. Now, these doctors are all pro-developing this area for medical offices. It will be very wise for us all to remember that even if this new plan is passed, it will always stand as a small token, and will be largely overshadowed by the six-story professional building a mere 50 meters away, which was, which was passed by previous councils decades ago, when they had the foresight of what's needed right next to the hospital for our community. I would therefore ask you to strongly consider this new proposal, and I thank you for the chance to speak to council again. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I just had a question for Dr. LaRue. I was surprised to hear about the appeal, well, I'm not surprised to hear about the appeal regarding the five-story. If a three-story is approved, is that definitely dropped? Or are you continuing?
If a three-story, in accordance to city council, city planning, is accepted, then the appeals drop. Then we'll accept that.
My own, the reason I ask that, I don't want to have the, and a five-story, if it went to the OMB, in my opinion, would probably have some success in the location you're talking about here. But I don't want you, this council approving a three-story, and then you could carry on to the OMB and get approval for a five, and then midstream, you, you get the five-story. If this is approved as a three-story, then the five-story will not be pursued?
Yeah. For the time being, if we might later on, 20 years, think a five-story is needed for the area, then we might come back to council. But at this stage, there's no intention to go on with five-story. But at this stage, there's no intention to go on with five-story, three-stories approved.
Thank you. Any other comments? One of the questions that was asked was, they were wondering what the look of the building was going to be, and we wondered if you had any preliminary drawings or renderings.
No, not at the present time. What we've been trying to do is get a footprint established, and that's what Mr. Bolbruck showed as a part of this particular site plan. Our footprint was a little further back, he's moved it forward, we find that acceptable. So once we have the footprint, then the building will be designed within that.
Okay, and one other question I recalled was hours of operation. Didn't know if you had any idea?
I think the hours of operation, it's very difficult to pin somebody down to hours of operation. I can't even give my own hours of operation, but it will be in keeping with what's currently hours of operation at the medical professional building. So you're looking at similar hours to what the professional building is operating.
And I think, near the ad, you don't be too flippant on it, not many of us go to our doctors on meetings.
Right. Yeah, fair enough. Counselor Peter Angelo.
Thanks, Your Worship. And through you to perhaps Mr. Brady, there were a couple residents on Prospect Street that were concerned about the privacy aspect between the development and the properties over on Prospect. I was wondering if you could go over the fencing that are in the report as well as the setback.
Certainly. On the plan that's up on the screen, and I believe is up on your screens, and for the public's knowledge, the area which is green is area which will be grassed or landscaped, as the case may be, and so that area will act as a buffer. All along the southern portion, there will be a fence that will run adjacent to the landscape area, and then there will also be a fence that runs to north to south, and across the back. So that at every edge of the development, as it faces Prospect or other streets for that matter, there will be a fence, there will be landscaping behind it of 1.2, 1.5 meters in width, that's not height, that's in width, and then there will also be some grass that will be associated with it. Does that answer your question there?
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Wing.
Yes, as far as the, you know, I can certainly agree with the need for medical buildings, professional offices to be in close proximity to the hospital. That, you know, that makes nothing but very good sense. My concern is, we are talking here about what one of the Prospect Street residents referred to as a nice residential area. I'm not sure this is the optimal place to be putting up offices. You know, if you want to be in close proximity to a hospital and blend nicely with your surroundings and not disrupt residential backyards, and the place to go is along Kitchener Street, which backs onto the 420, and doesn't disrupt anybody's backyard, because there's nothing but highway behind you, there's also the beginning there with the professional development building of, you know, what could become a row of offices. So this isn't the only place to go and be in close proximity to the hospital, but more than that, I'm really concerned, I think it was Mr. Brady's comment about they're trying to get a footprint established, and my question to our planning staff, well, actually, two questions. First of all, why nowhere in the written report or in the oral report did we hear anything about an appeal to the previous decision being made? I'm just wondering why we didn't hear about that until the proponents came up to the microphone, but I'm also wondering what can be done tonight to ensure that if this is approved, that other appeal is withdrawn, and they don't use this as a springboard to change this into a five-story building against the neighborhood's wishes.
Fair enough. Mr. Bolbruck.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think we've heard tonight that they are willing to remove the five-story. The reason why there is no mention of the OMB appeal was that I was not aware of it, even to just admit, this is the first I heard of it. So I must apologize, maybe my head's in the sand, but I was not aware of any appeal to the board. And I thought we were processing this quite well. We've had our meetings, we've dealt with the residents, we've dealt with the proponents, and we've tried, as Mr. Brady says, broker a compromise with all parties involved, and that's certainly what we strive to do.
It seems to, I don't think I've ever in 13 years on council, ever seen an application like this come forward when there's an appeal underway for the same property. I don't know, I find this unusual, to say the least.
I have to admit, I'm a little shocked at the appeal as well. You know, they could appeal at any time. Basically, I would have thought they would have gone through the process here and then, you know, see what council did, and then take their decision to go appeal later, so.
Now, where is the appeal filed?
Time factor, yeah.
Where would the appeal be filed, if there is an appeal to the OMB? Where is that appeal filed?
Maybe Mr. Brady can help.
I think Mr. Matt should be able to, or, yes, he's already-
The OMB appeal is initially filed with the city, and then the city's obligated to forward materials to the Ontario Municipal Board.
Okay, so where in the city? I mean, is it, you know, go to finances?
I think the only reason why Mr. Bolbruck didn't know about it was because Mr. Hurlovich is away. It's just because of Mr. Hurlovich's holidays that Mr. Bolbruck didn't become aware of this, of the appeal, because Mr. Hurlovich was personally handling this file, and so I believe that's why there was, that Mr. Bolbruck didn't know about it. I'm surprised, I didn't know about it either, because I didn't. But in any event, how, this, the first, there's a couple of things, though, that might interest you, Counselor Wing. This kind of approach of appealing and then coming back to council is often done in other municipalities. I'm surprised, given the amount of time you've been on council, one of these hasn't come to you before, but it has, it is commonly done in other municipalities. The other thing, you could just simply ask that the appeal be withdrawn before the new bylaws presented to council.
Beautiful. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any final questions from council? Okay, the public meeting with respect to proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. No further submissions, either pro or con, should be allowed from the gallery or the public. Does any member of council wish to make a motion regarding the proposed zoning bylaw amendment? Counselor Thompson?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I found this extremely difficult to come to a conclusion with respect to this particular matter, and when you're on council, you're expected to be fair to all parties concerned, and I have a particular friendship with two of the adjoining properties and would do anything to try to assist them, both Mrs. and Mrs. Alefante, who live directly beside on one, and of course, my good friend, who is brother-in-law Gary Hendershot, who sat around this table, so I certainly have a great deal of sympathy for what is going on there. And one of the reasons I asked the question, why this appeal was going ahead, and would there be a movement towards going to the OMB in spite of this being approved to get five stories? This is zoned, and I asked the question earlier, for a three-story apartment. They could do that and probably get a lot closer and fit into the zoning, and I would much rather have a medical building that is there from 8 o'clock or 9 o'clock in the morning and quits about 7:00 or whatever the latest is, rather than having somebody sitting in a balcony in their apartment, looking down into my backyard. The attempt by the applicant to make this more compatible, and maybe there is some other things that can be done to even give them more privacy, particularly with the concerns on Prospect. I talked to Mrs. Alefante yesterday. Her major concern was the privacy, and she thought there was an effort made there, but the main thing was the methadone clinic. She wanted to make sure that there was no methadone clinic in this particular building. Where else would you locate a medical clinic in a more optimum location? Obviously, across from the hospital. Do we need a facility like this? Do we need more doctors? Do we, Dr. Luru indicated that this is going to be the center for orthopedic surgery in the Niagara Peninsula. One thing that we are going to get that, while we're losing everything else, unfortunately. But I think that there's been a genuine attempt to try to solve the problems and concerns. If there is more flexibility, hopefully, that can come out of the site plan, and certainly, any motion I would make, that the residents be given the opportunity to sit in and make decisions with respect to all of the matters, with respect to lighting, parking, gates on the parking lot, fencing, the landscaping, and the buffering. I never heard anything about the buffering, about trees and whatever that can be placed along the property line in the green space to provide more protection for the people here. My concern with respect to this, I'm trying to find, I think this is the best use for that property. If it was an apartment, I think it would be more of an intrusion into the area. All you have to do is look at that one lot that's set there with the weeds uncut for the last 10 or 15 years, and certainly a nice, or nothing beneficial to the municipality. So I think that this is a good compromise. I think that the applicant has done what he could do to make this happen, and I think that it's far better than an apartment, which could happen in a heartbeat, and I think that, I feel comfortable with the decisions I've made in my own mind to try, because I feel there is protection for the properties on either side, and should be a complement to this community and to the medical clinic.
So you're making a motion? Is that a motion?
Yes, including some flexibility with respect to the movement of the building, if that can be done, to provide some more protection for the people on Prospect. Definitely, I'd like to see something more specific, which will come out of the site plan regarding landscaping trees and giving them more protection on both sides and also around the back of the parking lot, and that the people be given the opportunity to sit in on the site planning also.
And the OMB?
And also that this not proceed until we know that the Ontario Municipal Board hearing has been relinquished, and that will no longer proceed. If that, if that, that's the key area here. If that's not done, because my concern is that if they go to the OMB, there's a good chance that they would get this, and secondly, if this one isn't approved and it goes to the OMB, there's no question in my mind, it would be approved. So I have no concerns about my motion.
Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, by Counselor Carrio, by Counselor Morocco.
Second, the motion, Your Worship, I also believe that if this continues on to the OMB, and I'm sure that they've had their consultants report to them, that they'd have a good chance to win this at five stories, and I certainly commend the doctor and his team for coming back to us for a three-story application, because I think if they would stick to their guns and then continue to go back to the OMB, that the neighbors would be facing a five-story building. So I'm glad they came back to us and gave us the opportunity to put this in as a three-story building, and I'm certainly going to support it as a three-story, and I didn't support it as a five-story.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Morocco.
Your Worship, I'm not going to spend the time reiterating actually what's already been said, and I support exactly what they're saying. I think that we have to be careful of what we don't support, because if it does come back, I think it will also be a five-story or an apartment building, and the intrusion on their privacy will be a lot greater, so I have to say I have to support this.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Peter Angelo.
Thanks, Your Worship. I too plan on supporting the recommendation in the report. I think that it's a good compromise between the proponent and the residents. I think that people have to remember that there's three separate zonings here that the proponent has on the land, one being institutional, one being R5A, one being commercial, and the building height of all three of those zoning uses is really no different than what's being proposed here. But what the proponent did give up is setback requirements, and the proponent in the plan has agreed to greater setback requirements than what would be proposed under any of the three zonings that he has. So I think it's a very good compliment, compromise on the proponent's part, and I congratulate him. And in a perfect world, I would say that it would be great if we could hold up the application until we got, I guess, a commitment that the OMB appeal would be approved, but I'm not sure if legally, Your Worship, we're allowed to do that.
Certainly, if I could answer that, just deal with that issue, what I propose is that we, that prior to the bylaw being presented to council, because what council, it's kind of following usual procedure, council resolves that a bylaw be presented to them at a future meeting, and what we would do as a staff is not present that bylaw to you until we can assure you that the five-story appeal has been withdrawn. That can be done simply by having the applicant send a letter to us, say, withdraw their appeal.
Thank you. Counselor Carrio?
And my question would be, what if the residents appealed the three-story, and we've already stopped them from their appeal of the five-story?
Well, they're perfect. We would, we, the staff, would then go forward supporting the applicant, we'd all be on the same side, supporting the three-story.
Okay.
Because council approved that, and that's what we'd be putting forward to the board as the decision that's been made in the public interest by this council.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, just to add to that, if that were to happen, would they not go back in the queue as to when their application would be heard by the OMB? Would that not cost a lot of time, as you've been saying?
I don't, it would, they would go back in the queue. Given the current practices of the Ontario Municipal Board, it's not, an appeal is not the disaster for the developer it once was. They'll probably be heard within six months at the outside for one of this, case of this meg to. It used to be, they all went, you know, two years, three years, but it isn't that way anymore. It's only the really big ones that take a big block of time, five weeks or so, that you're looking at very significant delays.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is everybody comfortable with the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Next on the, on the agenda, is another planning item. Public meeting, AM 2010-024, zoning bylaw amendment application on Center Street. I would ask the city clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda, please.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit the elimination of parking requirements for certain uses at 5043 Center Street. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, January 14th, 2011, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'd ask Mr. Bolbruck to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll proceed to make some comments here on this application, known as AM 2010-024. As you can see, that this property has an older dwelling that had been used as a restaurant in the past called Ma Legretto's. It has not been used, to my recollection, for a few years. Just to let you know of, whoops, sorry. Bill?
That's pretty quick, you're hired.
Yeah.
Move us forward.
Okay. This gives you an idea as to the nature of the land uses surrounding this property. It's in a tourist commercial designated area. It's all basically tourist commercial uses. You see, there's parking lot, city parking lot, and you've got a motel to the north and additional parking and restaurants in the vicinity. This is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. It encapsulates a large portion of the property. It is proposed as a single-story restaurant with patio, outdoor patios in this area here, as well as the front, along Allen Avenue. This gives you an air photograph shot of the property, gives you the nature of the uses surrounding it. Again, largely tourist commercial uses. Very quickly, with some of the comments, we're dealing with a proposal that is 701 square meters in size. It involves the redevelopment of property containing the older home. The owner, older home, will be demolished and replaced with a new building. The size of the restaurant intended is to be 140-seat restaurant. The applicant is requesting basically three items. Firstly, they want an exemption from the requirement of parking, even though the site plan shows a few parking spots- the site plan shows a few parking spots being provided. The allowance for a required loading space to be reduced from six meters to the requirement of nine. And thirdly, the required exterior side yard setback established along Allen Avenue. The road widening will be slightly less than what is required in the bylaw, but nevertheless is what is needed. And we'll get into that a little bit later. Just on the neighborhood meeting that was held on January 11th, 2011, there were no members at that meeting. Circulation of comments, we had no negative comments from, pardon me, any agency. Our transportation services did say that they would recommend support for the proposal, provided the shortage of parking is provided through a cash-in-lieu of parking contributions. They did mention the 1.5-meter road widening required along Allen and a daylighting trangle as well at the corner of Allen and Center Street. Our landscape architect recommended a cash-in-lieu parkland dedication to 2%. That is typically what is applied for tourist commercial areas. As I mentioned, the official plan, the land's designated tourist commercial, it's also within the Clifton Hill tourist district. The official plan provides reductions in parking requirements subject to a comprehensive review. That comprehensive review was done and carried out through the tourist area parking demand study completed last year or about a year and a half ago. That study was brought forward to council for decision and has been deferred subject to consultation with the public and tourist operators. We anticipate that to be brought back to council in the near future. So with the study, we can recommend a less requirement for parking. It's recommended in that study that the parking requirement be one parking space for 10 seats. Therefore, 14 parking spots are required. Normally, the parking standard would call for 28 spaces on the site. I did want to mention that council did approve a couple of other applications where there was, the parking requirement was waived with no cash-in-lieu for the parking shortage. So I thought it was good that we mentioned that. We think it's consistent as far as the OP is concerned that there probably should be some parking required. Just how you do that through cash-in-lieu is an opportunity. But then the cash-in-lieu policy is quite old and probably needs to be looked at. The site plan, we mentioned, six spaces are on there. One would be lost through road widening and another for loading area. So therefore, there's only four usable spots. And the overall shortage of 10 we're recommending can be addressed through the cash-in-lieu. Other than that, staff has no real concerns with the proposal. We agree with the setback from the road widening perspective and also the reduction in the loading area. As far as the strategic priorities, the redevelopment, we think is a positive redevelopment, can be supported from a planning perspective. It satisfies council's strategic priority by providing infill development. We would recommend that the cash-in-lieu parking be applied. It is council policy and therefore we are required to recommend that. In conclusion, the applicant, or the application for zoning amendment can be supported with the requirement for parking being addressed through cash-in-lieu. The official plan provides for reduced parking through a demand analysis which has been carried out. And even though the council's not approved that policy or that parking demand analysis study, we do wish to recommend it be applied here. So the recommendation, the council approved the request to eliminate parking subject to the cash-in-lieu policy. And there is an opportunity that that payment could be made over five years if so desired by council. And that's the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Willbrook. Just before we entertain questions, I've got a note here, there's a car with its, left its lights on, a license plate BKVA300. It's a black Mercedes. Okay? Are there any members? Yes, Counselor Peter Angelo.
Your worship, just had a question to Mr. Bullerbrook. In your presentation, in one of the bullets, it had something about if we don't provide cash-in-lieu, that the city would compromise itself in the future when we are required to provide parking. When are we ever required to provide parking?
You're talking about the cash-in-lieu policy?
No, it says in here, I see if you can just go ahead, please, Mr. Natsis. Go ahead again. There you go. The third bullet down says although not requiring cash-in-lieu for this property may seem insignificant, waiving the requirement will compromise funding when the municipality is required to construct a desaster.
Yeah.
When are we ever required to construct parking? I mean, I know there's a lot of private operations that have started up.
Right.
When are we ever required?
You're talking about council.
Well, when the municipality requires. It says when the municipality is required.
Yeah. Under the current bylaw...
Says that when the municipality is required to construct.
Yeah.
And I don't think that we're ever required to construct.
Okay. Well, the idea, I guess you have to look at the cash-in-lieu policy and what it's intended for is to collect monies for when it's needed. But you're correct with the, I guess, wording that, you know...
Okay. I just didn't know whether or not we were ever required. I didn't think we were.
Okay.
Okay, Counselor Thompson?
Well, we haven't in the last couple of applications, but previously it was automatic. And the council, I was here when we approved many of them, particularly on Clifton Hill.
Counselor Gates?
Jim, through you, I just wanted to ask, you said there was a couple other examples where we've done the cash-in-lieu parking. I'm just wondering, could you name those two spots that you're using for examples?
No, the two examples in the presentation were ones that the council had approved without requirement for any parking and no cash-in-lieu. To my knowledge, there hasn't been a requirement for cash-in-lieu for quite some time. And maybe, but I know it's an old policy. It probably needs to be relooked at. If council wishes to waiver, they certainly have that ability. It's just that, you know, when we come into, when we look at the cash-in-lieu policy and it says, you know, when there's a shortage, this is what we apply. We have to recommend that. So it's up to council to make the decision.
Thank you. Counselor Carrier?
For those councilors that are wondering about why we may have done it, we did it to stimulate growth. There hadn't been much development in the last little while. And when a couple of applications had come to this council, it was inferred that if they had to come up with $100,000 or $150,000 cash-in-lieu, they may not be able to afford to do the development. So in council's, was their choice to waive it in order to stimulate the growth and the development. That may not have happened without it.
Any other questions of council? Counselor Wink?
Certainly, when Counselor Carrier explains it that way, then I can see how it fits our strategic priority to stimulate economic development in the city. My question, though, is Mr. Bullerbrook said the policy is old and needs to be looked at. Should we be directing staff to do so and to bring a report back? When the appropriate time comes, let me know and I'll make that motion.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. The other factor that we have to look at is we're working on trying to secure a people mover system in the area, which we want to be successful. And I think it's going to rely on people use parking at that service and paying for that service. So it's something else that should probably be factored into this report. So appreciate that, counselor. Any other comments? Okay. Members of the public are advised that failure to make any oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheet will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant that would like to speak to council? Okay, seeing none? Council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative. Welcome, Ms. Gilberti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, happy Valentine's Day to all of you. Present with me tonight is the applicant, Mrs. Anne Louise DeGiorgio, and her husband Jack, and their son Dominic, and also Mr. Peter Lesdell, the project architect. I would firstly like to thank Messrs. Alex Hrlavich, Ken Mack, and Andrew Bryce for having worked with us on this file and for their kind assistance during the process. As you are aware, by this application, my client proposes to demolish the existing older home which served as a restaurant for many years and redevelop the site by constructing a new building to be used as a restaurant. What does that mean? Development charges, building permit fees, construction jobs, and new jobs to the area. More importantly, by this application, my client is requesting that the same zoning regulations that apply to tourist commercial zone lands which are located down the street, along Ferry Street, which exempts certain uses, including restaurants and others, to be exempt from parking and to have that same exemption provided to the subject lands. Therefore, we're asking for the same thing that was established many years ago. In addition, by this application, my client is also requesting an amendment allowing a required loading space to be reduced from nine meters to six meters in length, and that the required exterior side yard setback from the original center line of Allen Avenue be reduced from 10 meters to 7.62 meters. This will establish the setback at the lot line after the necessary road widening is provided. History, in 1981, city council passed by law 81-199, which exempts certain properties in the city from providing required parking. Again, that was done in order to stimulate development and promote a pedestrian-focused atmosphere. This bylaw was passed at that time and has been implemented since then. Of great interest to my client, the properties fronting along Ferry Street, which are located west of the Baymont Inn and Suites, on the south side of Ferry Street, and those properties located west of the Travel Lodge Hotel on the north side of Ferry Street, all the way up to Stanley Avenue, and also further west, enjoy this great benefit. When this bylaw was passed in 1981, a parking demand study was not conducted. The subject lands are located in very close proximity to the area on Ferry Street, which has been afforded this great parking exemption. My client has not conducted a very expensive, time-consuming parking demand study because the subject lands are located in the Clifton Hill sub-district of the core tourist area of the city. Policy 4.2.16 of the city's official plan states that the Clifton Hill sub-district is located in an area which is to be a commercial entertainment center, which should preserve its festival atmosphere and permit a range of commercial and entertainment uses, which should provide a pedestrian focus at the street level. It does not appear to be fair, just, equitable, or reasonable to require my client to submit such an expensive study to support its request for a parking exemption when other lands located in very close walking proximity have benefited from this exact same exemption since 1981. The applicant's request, the applicant is seeking to be treated in the same manner that city council chose to treat other properties in that nearby walking area since 1981. However, not even a year ago, on February 22nd, 2010, two other applicants also requested complete parking exemptions for their properties located on Victoria Avenue, just steps around the corner from these subject lands. In those previous two applications, city council granted complete parking exemption without the necessity of submitting a parking demand study or paying any cash-in-lieu. Again, it does not appear to be fair, just, equitable, or reasonable to require my client to pay cash-in-lieu of 10 parking spaces when city council since 1981, and most recently as of February 22nd last year, permitted complete parking exemptions to properties located in the same Clifton Hill sub-district as the subject lands without the necessity of paying any cash-in-lieu. You will note that the staff recommendation report has referred to these other two previous applications. In conclusion, I submit that a complete parking exemption should be provided to the subject lands for the same uses which are exempt from parking in by law 81-199 without the necessity of providing a parking demand study to support the application for the following reasons. Number one, the parking study was not provided or conducted in 1981, and neither were they provided with the previous two applications of last year. Cash-in-lieu of parking was not paid by those properties which were afforded those exemptions in 1981, and it was not paid with the previous two applications which were granted approval last year in February. The precedent for permitting the complete parking exemptions was set in 1981, and it was done in order to stimulate some type of redevelopment of that area. And here we are, several years later, several decades later, asking for more stimulation of development in that area. It would be fair, equitable, reasonable, and consistent to provide equal treatment to the subject lands as those which were afforded parking exemptions as outlined in that bylaw from 1981. In addition, with respect to the other zoning bylaw amendment requests made by my client pertaining to the reduction in length of the loading area from nine meters to six meters and the reduction of the minimum setback from the original center line of Allen Avenue, I submit that since planning staff have no concerns with respect to the same, they should also be positively considered by you. For this reason, we kindly request that you approve the application as it has been submitted and not support the recommendation placed in the staff recommendation report.
Thank you, Ms. Gilberti. Final questions from council? Counselor Thompson?
Yes, thank you very much. First of all, the 1981, I happen to be around at that particular time. In fact, we identified that area as a non-growth area, and we had a cash-in-lieu policy at the time, and it was thousands of dollars. In fact, Mr. Bullerbrook puts the cost of one cash-in-lieu property now, what's the amount of money involved?
Well, the cost of the parking?
In this area, yes.
If there was $24,000, they'd charge you half.
$24,000, and they charge half of that. So $12,000 a spot. And I think that I was involved in two or three applicants. One, the Menachellas on Clifton Hill, and I believe the Lombardi property on Ferry Street. So anyway, we, at that time, we knew that this was a no-growth area. We passed a bylaw for Ferry Street, Queen Street, and Main and Ferry, that there would be no parking requirements, no cash-in-lieu, simply because we wanted to stimulate development. And just because this particular property, which has been sitting there for the last 20 years, falling apart, that an eyesore for the general area, no revenue to the municipality from taxes, development charges or whatever. So here's a goal and opportunity to clean up the area and make it happen. And to suggest that cash-in-lieu, when we've already dealt with this just recently in the last year, two occasions where we have not required cash-in-lieu and we have provided zero parking, I think this is a prime example why this application fits exactly into the previous two. Definitely, the policy has to be referred back to staff to come back in with something that is up-to-date, fair, and reasonable, so that we don't have the same debate and dialogue and discussion in the future because it's unnecessary. In fact, we keep talking about cash-in-lieu to improve parking in the tourist area. I think the total collection is about $40,000. There's never been any new parking except that the, recently at the top of Bender Hill along the railroad allowance where we have put in some parking spots. The private sector has stepped up and put in their own parking. The Hoco property on Clifton Hill, the new casino parking ramp have all helped to get the walking traffic going and offset the concern with respect to parking in the area. So this is, in my opinion, a very simple application, similar to fit in with the other ones. And part of the motion should be that we dispense with the parking cash-in-lieu and come back with a policy that is more and come back with a policy that is more fitting with what the council has actually done. So at the appropriate time, I would make the motion for approval of this, similar to the other applications.
I think this is appropriate. Go ahead, Nate. Would you like to make that motion?
Well, you have to close the meeting first.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Any other questions from council then? Of the applicant? No? Okay. The public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. No further submissions pro or con. Counselor Thompson? Seconded by Counselor Iannone. Is there any discussion? And in fairness, we should say, staff aren't at fault. I mean, it's in our...
It's the bylaw.
Exactly. They have no choice, so. Any discussion around the motion, Counselor Carroll and Counselor Maves?
The other things, there were a couple of other things as well that were being asked of us by something to do with loading dock. There was a couple of other things that were asked, included in the motion.
Yes.
The application asks for the reduction of the loading space from nine meters to six and to reduce the amount of the setback from 10 meters to 7.62 from the center line.
Also, I might add, there's a letter of concern from the neighbor. He has been contacted, and the applicant has assured him that they're going to work with and cooperate with him in trying to resolve these issues also.
Any other comment, Counselor Maves?
No, that was my same question, and I'd be happy to second the motion.
Okay, well, we've already got it seconded. Okay, any other discussion? Everyone understands the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous? Thank you very much. Okay, next item, last bylaw amendment application, AM 2010-023, and I would ask the clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda.
Public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a proposed semi-detached dwelling at 6501 Dunn Street. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, January 14, 2011, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'd like to ask the planning director to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a shot of the subject property. This is Ray AM 2010-023 at 6501 Dunn Street. This is the old farmhouse on the north side. This has, property here is the subject property being proposed for the semi-detached. It has existed for that way for many years. This is, shows the nature of the land uses surrounding the property. We have the Hydro Corridor to the north and surrounded by residential to the west, south, and to the east. The nature of the properties in the area are all single detached development. This will be the first in the slightly intensification of the semi-detached. The nature of land uses in the area, there are some townhouses to the east and sort of further past Drummond. We've seen over the course of a few years where the intensification of residential development has occurred with some town housing and some other multiple-family development. This is a site plan showing the nature of the semi-detached. We have the farmhouse, as I mentioned, which is two, two-and-a-half stories high. The property to the west is a one-story bungalow, and we'll address the side yard setback in a moment. This shows us an air photograph that kind of really shows the nature of the uses in the area, the subject property. This was the access to the back of the former farmhouse and barns back there many years ago. You've got single detached dwellings all along Dunn Street. Just for some verbiage to talk about the proposal, we're dealing with an 800-square-meter property. The applicant's requesting the R2 single-family and two-family zone, which permits semi-detached dwellings. The current zoning is residential, single-family, 1C, which permits only single detached dwellings. The nature of the request of changes is to recognize the existing lot frontage at 18 meters is required to a 16.6 meters, which is what's on the lot currently. They're also asking for a reduced side yard setback for a two-story dwelling from 1.8 meters to 1.2 meters. We are opposed from planning perspective of that. We'd like to see the 1.8 meters retained, particularly as it affects the property on the west, and to establish the front yard setback at nine meters. The circulation of comments, we did not receive any negative comments from any agency. We did receive a letter of concern from the neighbor, I believe that's the neighbor to the west. There was concerns about increased traffic, servicing, flood potential, and a former well that was on the property. Municipal Works has, will require a grading plan as part of the building permit stage to address drainage concerns. There had been a history of sewage backup in the past that has been rectified, to my knowledge, with the separation of the sanitary and the storm sewer that occurred along Dunn Street, I think about a few years ago now. And my understanding is the one chap that had a problem in the past has not had a problem since that occurred. The Ministry of Environment has reported that they have no record of the well that has been reportedly understood to be on the property. We did have the public or the neighborhood open house on January 5 of this year. No neighbors were in attendance to that meeting. As part of the planning analysis, the provincial policy statement obviously supports this kind of intensification, even though it's a kind of a minor intensification. Our official plan designates the land as residential, which permits a whole range of housing types, and would certainly support this zoning change. It is along a collector road where we would like to see intensification happen. The proposed dwelling, we think, is compatible with the neighborhood. Dwelling generally is consistent with the properties in the, as far as height and coverage and landscaping, and the municipal services are available that could service this property. The zoning to R2 permits both the single detached and semi-detached. The R2 standards will be applied. The items, as I mentioned before, that are not in compliance would be to recognize the existing lot frontage, which is 16.6 meters. The requirement for a semi-detached is 18 meters. The construction of the dwelling will be nine meters from the front yard. That equates to the frontage of the buildings on either side of the property. And the side yard, as I mentioned, for a two-story dwelling is typically 1.8 meters. The applicant has requested 1.2. We feel that it's important that we still apply the 1.8 meters typically required for a two-story dwelling. As far as the city's strategic priority, the applicant, application will satisfy the council's strategic priority by providing residential intensification and permitting infill development that takes place and takes advantage of existing infrastructure capacities. In conclusion, the zoning amendment to permit the semi-detached can be supported. It does comply with provincial policy, does conform with the official plan, and is a form of low-density development. The recommendation that council approve the application to rezone the land to a site-specific residential, single-family, and two-family R2 zone, which would permit the semi-detached dwelling. And that's my presentation.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bolbrook, are there any questions from members of council? Counselor Wing?
Just a comment regarding the drainage concerns. I remember in the late 1990s working with a resident, several properties to the west of the building who was experiencing basement flooding at that time, and I remember the staff did something, it might have been just a backflow valve, but I know they worked with this lady to solve the problems. She was a very long-term resident of the area, and she advised that there was a buried stream bed to the east, I think where this property is. So I just, I noted that there was a letter from an area resident expressing similar concerns, and I just wanted to note to staff that they should take that concern seriously because this is not, not the first time that I've heard of this, and it's certainly not the first time that there's been any reports of flooding in the area, because I do remember working with staff and the lady in question to solve the problems she was experiencing.
Maybe we can ask Mr. Holman to comment?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, perhaps just to help, Counselor Wing was referring to the properties that are just, I guess, to the west of where the intersection with Caledonia is, and we've been on the property a couple of times to investigate that situation. The subject property will be serviced through existing sewers, storm sewers, and sanitary sewers to the front. In this case, the flow goes to the east up to the next intersection. In the area where we had the problems in the past, through that one property there, I believe it's 6527, there's a sanitary sewer that comes in from Irwin Crescent across the Hydro Corridor and comes down and comes out to Dunn Street and heads west. So the flows that would be going into the new sewer, or the sewer from the new duplex, would not affect the flows that are coming through the area where we had the problems in the past. Now, from my recollection, the issues that we had in the past were related to the condition of the pipe, and those issues can be easily resolved through our RAP program and through our sewer lateral relining program.
Okay, Counselor? Okay, thank you. Yeah, Counselor Gates?
Just real quick, Jim, an individual, Dave Wilson, I know staff had talked to him extensively, like I have over the last few days, and I'm just wondering if he's satisfied with staff has been telling him up to his property, and I know you guys have talked to him.
I'm sorry, I've not had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Wilson. I know that we have in the past offered to work with him. Obviously, some work would have to be done on private property, so it would be a matter of coordinating our work with his work. To this point, he's not taken advantage of it, but we'd be happy to work with him in the future.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. So anyone other than the applicant, please come up. You could please state your name and your address.
My name's Margaret Julian, and my mother's property is 6511 Dunn, which is the property to the west that's been referred. I was also the individual who wrote the letter on my behalf, and I've given you a copy. I still have some concerns that were in my letter that I'm hoping the applicant would be able to address. The sewer lines, although the report says it's been a number of years, I do know that there has in the last couple of years, has been a sewer backup in that, in our house, my mom's house. I'm not surprised that environment does not have a copy of a well being there because it's probably been gone since '58, something like that. They wouldn't have records of that. The modest increase in traffic, there is a big concern. I don't know if there's been records of accidents kept at that intersection. My father has been in an accident when backing out of there. There still is a concern as to why is there a request to have the garages closer to the road when you can clearly see in the picture that there is lots of room at the back, which is what I addressed in my report or my letter. Why does it have to be so close to the road when you have all that property back there? The property has sat idle for five years. It's being not kept up as well. We wonder whether or not, if it's built, when it's built, is it going to be a rental property, or is it going to be actually sold as a family residential area? I'm hoping that the applicant would be able to address that.
Okay, well, we'll try to get you some answers when they have the proponent up here to speak.
Yes, and there was concern about the soil on there, because what you can't see there, maybe the previous picture, is the height of the hill next to there. We don't know how old or what there might be under that hill.
Is that in the backyard?
It's on the side. It's to the east of the property. The city vehicle's actually blocking where you could see, but it does slope down, which is part of the problem. That was once an orchard there when the family moved in there. It was all orchard, everything drained down into the house. We had many floods when we first moved into that house.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else other than the applicant that would like to approach the council? Okay, seeing none? Oh, yes. Please state your name and your address.
Sorry, ladies and gentlemen, my English is not fluent, so I tried to explain my problem.
Your name, your name?
My name is Svetlana Diana. I am owner of the farmhouse, as gentleman Robert Barlock told. It's pretty antique house, very old and very nice house, really jammed in the city. And this house is log house covered by vinyl siding and fenced around the wooden fence. Before me, in the 5th of January, the owner of this house had been banked because I buy on the power of sale. So bank don't pay attention what's happened with the next property. They never come to the neighborhood place. But it's very important for me. I don't want to lose my house by fire situation because it's log house. And redacting of the side of the yard to 50% as we have seen according to this application, it's one and two meters instead of one and eight. It's really serious danger for my house. My house is historical house. I can invite everybody to my house to show the antique stained glasses. I'm very proud. Now, maybe famous people live, I don't research this question, but maybe famous people live in this place because it's really nice house. And the problem is, one more problem. If we put a huge house in this mountain space, my house standing in the mountain, it's by the snow, it's not seen, but two spaces, mine and next one, it was one property before, many years ago. I just bought it in the 20th of January, but before, many years ago, it was one piece of land, and it's on the mountain. All other houses, it's one-story bungalow. It's small bungalows in all line. If we plant in the, put in the mountain, three storage house, semi-detached, in the smallest frontage in this area, all houses have a more large space of frontage. This is a smaller space because it was piece of another land. It will be monster that's standing around small bungalows and street looking ugly because all other houses standing deeper, and they are one story in the high trees, and street will be filled as a view. This is Dunn Street. This is one of ninth street in the city and touristic area, and I am really concerned of two points. The first point, that it will be very near, very close to mine, and fire danger, it's real. And another concern, that view of this subdivision will be damaged if to put in the smallest frontage, double house and mounting, in mountain space.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Counselor Iannone?
Yeah, just as a correction, it's only a two-story. It's not a three-story.
It's a two-story. Okay, it's a two-story, yes? And Counselor Wing?
Yes, what size of setback are staff recommending on the east side of the property? The application?
Mr. Bullerbrook?
Yes, on the east side as well as the west side, we're recommending a 1.8 meter setback, which is typically for a two-story to a residential zone.
So not the 1.2, but 1.8?
Yes, the 1.2 is what the applicant is proposing. He has requested that.
Okay. Is there any other questions of council? Okay. Counsel will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative. Can you get the applicant up here, please? Could you please state your name and your address, sir?
My name is Carmen Sverdovor. Yeah, yes, I, I don't think there is any problem with the setback. And the situation the lady says about the 1.8 meter on the side, I think the second floor should be 1.8 meter on the side. First floor, I think is 1.2 should be okay. And that's what I agree with when I play with the department.
So you agree with the recommendation?
With the recommendation, yes. For the second floor, we were, I was, I was, I was to speak with a gentleman on the planning and he agreed that 1.8 on the second floor will be okay.
Okay. Well, Mr. Bullerbrook, if we could just get a response to that?
Sure, I can try to make a comment. You mentioned that you want your, your main floor to be 1.2 meter setback.
Right.
But the upper floor to be 1.8. That's not the typical requirement for residential development when you're dealing with a two-story building. We would prefer the 1.8 separation from the lot line for the entire two-story building.
Okay.
On both sides of the property.
Okay. And so there was a question, maybe, I don't know if you could answer it. One of the questions was the garage. They're asking, you've got it fairly close to the road with the big backyard. Is there any comment you wanted to make on that question?
Well, I think garage, it looked, it looked line with the other two building. I don't think it's, well, it may be too much. The house on the left, it's even farther on the street than the other one. If questioned to back up another couple feet, I don't have a problem another two feet.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, thank you. Mr. Bullerbrook?
Typically, Mr. Mayor, the average of the front setback has to be maintained. And you'll see to the east, you've got a porch that extends further out. And it would be very close to the same setback as the bungalow to the west. So it's, it's certainly keeping with the nature of the area, so.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Are there any other questions from council? Okay. The public meeting with respect to proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. No further submissions either pro or for, pro or con should be allowed from the gallery. Does a member of the council want to make a motion regarding the proposed zoning bylaw amendment? I'd be happy to entertain a motion if someone would like to make it. Okay, move. Counselor Wing?
I, yes, I'll move the staff recommendation and stipulate that there be a 1.8 meter separation from the lot line in both the east and the west side yards.
Okay. Okay, seconded by Counselor Morocco. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, one opposed. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we've got some miscellaneous planning matters on tonight's agenda. PD 2011-12, Appeal of the Committee of Adjustment Decision Consent Application. Counselor Thompson?
As we seem to be going through this every other week in the same general area, I think the council has been consistent in its dealing with this particular area as a settlement and that we have treated other applications differently than the recommendation. I know that the staff have their planning principles and bylaws to abide by. In my opinion, this is not a viable farm area. And I would actually make a motion for PD 2011-12 and PD 2011-13 that we dispense with the appeal of the application.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Morocco. Any comment? Counselor Kerrio?
Worship, is, are we going to have staff have a look at this and come back with this? It seems like this should be driven really based on the Health Department's criteria on the size of the lot required. And it seems odd that in different areas of our municipality, there's different lot sizes required in rural areas. In some areas, it's one acre, some areas it's two acres, three acres. I think that the council has made it perfectly clear that we'd like to see this development, that, that there are many people in the area that would love to live in a rural setting. And it just seems that we don't, it's not fair. So I think it would be nice if staff would come back to us and we could look at the situation and at least have it consistent in our municipality.
Yeah, that's a great point. And I'd ask the CAO to comment.
Just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, that the last time the applications were before us, council had asked us to do that. So we are preparing a report just to get these two applications here tonight. We didn't have a report completed. So probably within the next month or so, we'll have that report back from planning. It's referenced in the report here tonight, but we just didn't have a chance to.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wing?
I'll just note what staff's said here. They pointed out that it's contrary to our official plan, to the regional policy plan and to the provincial policy statement. And there is the suggestion that approval could set an inappropriate precedent. I think that happened probably a few, a few such reports ago. And council has been consistent and I am going to remain consistent with my stand. And I'll just point out that there's also the note about council recently adopted natural heritage policies, official plan amendment number 96, which will designate the rear portion of Part II Environmental Protection Area. And this as well as the official plan does not permit creation of a new lot for a non-agriculture purpose. So there's actually one more reason not to let the appeal go in this case. So we'll stick to my guns.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, then we've got a motion on the floor and I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? One opposed with one conflict. Okay, thank you very much. Oh, yes, Mr. Sinclair?
Thanks very much.
I think so. You know, you know, we just, you know, we just approved it.
Yes, yes, sir. I just wanted, no, I just wanted to. I'm going to change my vote.
You heard that motion, Mr. Sinclair?
You can still send your bill. I gotta do something. Worship, members of council, the one thing you were good enough to do the last time, it really was really good of you to do it. And I'd ask you to do it again if you would. You made a motion that you would recommend to regional council that they withdraw their appeal. Because I have to face an appeal with them as well. So that would really be really helpful to my clients if you do it.
Okay, that is moved by Counselor Iannone, seconded by?
Yeah, I could include in the original motion.
Okay.
Add no part of that. Put the second there is okay.
Okay, so we'll include that in the original, well, we've already voted on it, didn't we? Yeah, so.
And make sure that the mayor is strongly in favor of the motion that regional council.
I spoke with the regional planner today as a matter of fact. It's coming, I believe we've got the 22nd, we have two.
Not too many enough?
Pardon me?
He's not talking.
Not too much, no. So we have a motion by Counselor Iannone, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that we ask the region to forsake their appeal to the applications that we've just approved. Any comment to the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? One opposed and one conflict.
Thanks a million.
Thank you very much. Hopefully you earned your pay tonight. Okay, Mayor's Reports and Announcements. Well, first off, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day. Yes, can't think of anything more fun to do on Valentine's Day than have a council meeting. And the clerk isn't here tonight, go figure. He's, he's busy having a baby, or well, his wife's having a baby.
Yeah, it's very important, nine months ago.
Yeah, that's right, nine months ago. I'd like to begin the evening by offering condolences to the family of Mary Lou Clark, a retired Niagara Falls Transit employee who passed away on February the 5th. Our thoughts and our prayers are with the family at this time. Recent events in the city. We had a Southern Tier Mayor's Report Thursday, February the 3rd in Fort Erie. I was happy to participate with my fellow Southern Tier Mayors. This is the first year they asked Niagara Falls to be part of the, of the show. Last year, they added Fort Erie. This year, they added Niagara Falls. You know, I had to learn a special handshake and get a tattoo. It was really, it was really interesting. But apparently next year, next year, it's going to be a regional-wide Chamber of Commerce event and they're going to involve all the 12 municipalities, so.
You're showing off your tattoo.
I'm not going to show my tattoo off, not tonight, no. Not for you. So many exciting things are going on in the Niagara region. And one thing, the theme absolutely was what's good for one town or city benefits all of us. And I think everybody took that one home. We realize that we're all in this together. I found it quite interesting that the majority of people that work at the majority of the plants in the area, actually, usually, two-thirds don't live in that city. I know when John Deere closed in Welland, everyone said, geez, poor Welland. And they said, it's not going to hurt Welland as much as it's going to hurt Port Colborne and Waynefleet. And even in town here with our Minix call center, two-thirds live out of town but work in town. So there's no doubt. There's a lot of mutual and symbiotic relationships between the different municipalities and the different industries. There's a meeting of regional council, council last Thursday, February the 10th. And I am happy to report to this council, this council has been fighting very, very hard to overturn the hospital improvement plan. And we've had upteen meetings, we've met with doctors, healthcare professionals, other politicians, ministers. There's been all sorts of lobbying. Well, I'm very happy to report that our NHS motion was approved 24 to 3 on Thursday night. It was an overwhelming, supported motion. And basically, in a nutshell, we're asking that the Ministry of Health immediately conduct an independent investigation of the NHS's hospital improvement plan. Further, that all aspects of the HIP outside of the new hospital are immediately suspended pending outcome of this investigation. And also, that the Ministry of Health commit to paying the downloaded costs such as emergency medical service downloading, et cetera. That the Ministry of Health commit to paying the downloaded costs associated with the hospital improvement plan. And as I mentioned, it was 24 to 3 votes, so we're very, very happy about that direction. And I'm working currently with our MPP to make sure that we get to Queen's Park and meet with our Minister of Health and meet with our Premier and let them know how serious we are about this. So thank you to all this council for being so strongly supporting this direction. And I can tell you, all the other municipalities around the region and the residents around the region are very pleased with the leadership that this council has taken. Women's Place Strike Out Violence Bowling Tournament. Thank you to the participants who bowled. Counselor Thompson, Iannone, Maves, myself and Joe Talarico. It was quite an interesting afternoon. I would highly recommend anyone that wants a good laugh, come out and watch one of our bowling tournaments. And we were certainly surprised, there was actually some expertise displayed on the bowling alley that day. I saw some members of council giving a clinic. I won't explain what kind of clinic that was, but there was a clinic going on. We had a lot of fun. We raised funds and awareness for a very good cause for Women's Place. As well, we've got the upcoming bowling, which will be for Big Brothers and Big Sisters, which will be next Saturday, February the, someone help me out? 26, thank you. At Cataract Lanes. So if you haven't already, make sure you polish up your bowling ball and get ready to have some fun. Wilma Morrison, she has received the Order of Ontario. Congratulations to Wilma Morrison for achieving this high honor. And as well, I was able to tour the Paul Henderson jersey tour, which was at the Gale Center. I was there with MPP Crater and we had a lot of fun. I didn't realize that Tretyak was his favorite goalie. And he was more interested in that jersey than he was Paul Henderson's number 19. But we got some good pictures taken, we had a little bit of fun. And last, last, or not lastly, second to last, Fire Public Meeting. Tomorrow night, Tuesday, February 15th at 6:30 PM at FJ Rutland School, there's going to be a fire public meeting. This is of particular interest to residents of Chippewa, Willoughby and Crowland. Information will be presented about volunteer fire service levels in these three areas. And there will be an opportunity for residents and stakeholders to ask questions, provide comment, and as well, if they'd like to get involved and become a volunteer. So that will be taking place tomorrow night at 6:30 PM, FJ Rutland School. Also, Snow Buddies. We want everyone to be aware of an initiative that this city council has taken. And it takes a little bit of time to get going, but I can tell you, the senior residents in the city, it can't, for them, it can't happen fast enough. Basically, in a nutshell, anybody in the city can sign up with Community Support Services of Niagara. They can do it through the City of Niagara Falls website. And what they do is they volunteer, they give their personal information. And there are seniors in the city that need help, maybe shoveling their walkway, maybe their porch, maybe a windrow that's too much for them to handle. And I did find out that so far, one of the school boards, a separate board, is allowing students to get their volunteer hours from grade eight and up, which is fantastic. We're just connecting with the public board. I anticipate their support as well. We look forward to a big push for volunteers in Niagara Falls. There's a lot of seniors that need help. And unfortunately, when we started the program, we had three volunteers, about 40 shoveling jobs. And it was a little bit overwhelming for those three volunteers. There's a link, as I mentioned, on the city's website under Snow Plowing that will direct you if you'd like to become a volunteer. And if it's not something for you, maybe you've got a child or a grandchild or someone that you know that would like to help out for as much or as little time as you can commit. There are some people out there certainly don't like being shut in and we could definitely use your support. And as I mentioned, the seniors are looking very much forward to it. And lastly, tonight, we'd like to acknowledge our deputy clerk, Mr. Bill Mattson. It's his birthday tonight. And, you know, I can't get over what kind of a deal our clerks worked out, you know? He's, he is Valentine's, you know, they're off having a baby. He knew it's a deputy clerk's birthday and he figured, I can't think of anything better to do than have him work on his birthday. Nice guy. But, but the deputy clerk's doing a great job and we appreciate him being here tonight.
Happy birthday, Bill.
Happy birthday, Bill, that's right, yeah. Let's see here. Okay, and so that, that covers all of our announcements. Yes, Counselor Gates?
Jim, can I just make a couple of comments on your report? Obviously, I wanted to congratulate you, Jim, at council, regional council on Thursday night. I was there. I think that the message that you took was loud and clear. The support that you gave this council, I think is greatly appreciated by everybody around the councils as well as the citizens. I did try to get you to bring up the fact around the privatization and some of those other issues, but I want to say what a great job you did. And if anybody thinks that healthcare problems in the Niagara region aren't real, this is a memo, and I normally don't like to read, a memo that went out to staff in Port Colborne on February 7th. Medical emergency for staff and visitors on site. Please be advised that when staff or visitors on site may experience chest pains, stroke symptoms, or any medical emergency, call 911. This is the same message that was and continues to be provided for the community. If immediate assistance is required, a code blue will then be done in the hospital and RN or physician from an urgent care will respond until the EMS arrives and the ambulance transports you to another, to appropriate emergency department. Urgent care centers treat adults and children who have non-life-threatening illnesses or injuries. Thank you for your consideration. And that's somebody that would be having a heart attack or a stroke right at a hospital and they're going to call an ambulance to take you to another facility. I can tell you, when I'm too emotional around it, if, when I had my problem going back a couple of years ago, if that was in place in Niagara Falls, I wouldn't be here today. This is what's going on in our healthcare. And I think everybody, Jim, certainly respects the job that you did Thursday night. And to get that many counselors to support what you're trying to do, congratulations. I just wanted to say that.
Well, thank you very much. And, and as all, as well, this just further illustrates the idiocy that we deal with. I mean, here you are in an urgent care center and you have to call 911 to get medical assistance. It's unbelievable. And as Minister Matthews said to Counselor Iannone and myself when we were in Windsor last summer, she said, the system in Niagara is broken. She admitted it was broken. She said, we need a made Niagara solution. So we're welcoming her to come down and help us. Let's get an investigation, let's find the solution because currently, we are not on a path to a solution. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I just want to add my comments also to working together as a mayor and council. You can see what has happened because of the previous administration did not have that support. The same in Welland, two mayors that are gone, and now we have success at the region. So when you work together, you can accomplish something. Nothing has changed over the last several years and the fight that has been going on here with the NHS, the HIP program, LYNs. And congratulations, a job well done. Just while your, in your comments, you mentioned about the meeting uh, the meeting tomorrow with the fire department. As I was going through some of my notes and I think that this would be an appropriate resolution to try to, uh, stimulate some interest in, uh, uh, people with, uh, the fire department and volunteering. Uh, there's presently a, uh, petition going to the Government of Canada to provide volunteer firefighters with a $3,000 non-refundable tax credit as an incentive. And I think that would be appropriate for us to endorse that and, uh, even bring it up at the meeting tomorrow night, that the council, uh, feels very supportive of our volunteers. And, uh, we wanna do this along with even looking at their, uh, stipend, uh, for what they're doing to stimulate that interest. So, uh, congratulations on the NHS and, uh, I would like that, uh, uh, put in the, the minutes as a motion for to support, uh, for that credit for the volunteer firefighting bill.
Okay. We've got a motion seconded by Counselor Wing. Uh, yes, Counselor Ian Oni. Oh, okay, you have a conflict, okay. So noted. Is there any other comments to the motion? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous with one conflict. Moving on, excuse me, uh, communications and comments of the city clerk. Uh, we have a, um, where are we here? Know-it-all Niagara and, uh, we have Donna Panetta in the audience here for know-it-all. They're requesting council provide a grant equal to the amount of the cost of the business license they required for the recent event. I believe the amount was, uh, was $150, I believe it was, Mr. Mattson? So, yes, Counselor Carrio?
I'll move that to grant just because they sat here all this time.
(laugh) Okay, we have a motion to grant the request. Do we have a second? Seconded by Counselor Gates. Any discussion? Counselor Wing?
Um, yes, I first heard about this, uh, actually I was contacted by one of the partners on Facebook and I said, you know, we can't do anything without getting it before council. But now that I read the council report, I'm really concerned about, uh, fair and equitable treatment. Uh, the report notes that, uh, Rotary, Lions Club, Woodworkers, Train Museum and Coin Show have all abided by this license requirement without dispute. And so my concern is if we make this, if we waive it in this case or give a grant back in this case, it creates an unfair situation for the other nonprofits which have paid this automatically all along. And, I, you know, I, I don't know, just when I looked over the, um, the budget, um, I was really concerned that, uh, you know, there was only nonprofit, you know, it wasn't really a fundraiser as I'm used to them. It was, there was to be a nonprofit donation to WARM and coincidentally, it's for the exact amount of, uh, of the daily sales license. But I, I can't support the motion because it is not fair to all those who have previously paid it and were doing this, the very same thing for charitable purposes as well. And probably more money go into charitable purposes from those events.
Okay, thank you.
What's the motion?
Uh, the motion is to, um, is to grant the, uh, $150 licensing fee be paid by the city.
Okay, is, is there any reason why this is on Valentine's Day?
Why it's on Valentine's Day? I'm not sure, maybe we could ask, uh, Ms. Panetta, did you wanna address the council yet? Did you like to come up and, uh, tell us why it's on Valentine's Day?
(inaudible).
Ian Oni. Counselor Thompson's very curious.
Carrie Matthews, resident of Niagara Falls. Donna Panetta, resident of Niagara. Uh, what was the question?
Um, I, actually I was trying to be humorous about why it's here on Valentine's Day. I'm , uh, willing to support the motion.
Is there any, any, uh, thing, anything you wanted to add to the council? We have a motion on the floor to accept. Um, was there anything you wanted to, before we called the vote, anything you wanted to make known other than what's in the report?
Just, um, number seven, which hopefully everyone have, has received from our comments, is that, that is in support of the comment of the council earlier tonight, that as citizens, we sincerely request that you look at this bylaw again, not only for us, but for every non-for-profit organization out there, okay? Because we truthfully believe that a town should not profit from a non-profit. And that if there is money to be made from a commercial property, that's one thing. But this is non-for-profit, so yes, some have already paid it and we're not here just on behalf of ourselves. We're on behalf of a lot of other organizations out there that have been made aware of this, that never knew of, of it before. And hopefully saving a lot of your time so that they're not going to be here month after month after month. So we're asking you to consider the forgiveness, um, because this was a zero profit. This $150 is coming directly out of WARM's profit that we would be paying to them. And that you look at these, this licensing again as a council to review it for all other nonprofits as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions of the ladies here? No? Okay, so we have, yes, Counselor Wing?
Not a question, it's just the other concern for me rising from the report is the fact that they're, it involves commercial vendors selling their wares and services. And staff noted that one of the rationales for having these licenses is to protect comparable local businesses which pay fixed costs such as property taxes, utilities, et cetera. So you've got businesses operating 365 days a year or maybe a few less, but operating here year-round, paying the property taxes and utilities and to waive the fees in this regard so that vendors from outside Niagara Falls can come in and sell the exact same services or goods and not have to pay property taxes to the city. I mean, you know, it creates an unfair situation. We're trying to support our local businesses and the per, part of the purpose of this daily sales license is to make it a little more level playing field. So when I read that and I understood what staff were saying to us, I realized then that I could not support what is being asked.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to absorb the cost of the $150. All those in favor? Uh, one, two, three, four? Opposed? One, two, three, you're, you're in favor, I'm sorry. Okay, so it's approved. Okay, thank you.
Thank you and have the Valentine's Day.
Okay, Andrew Reports, um, we've got 2011 budget and I understand that we're gonna entertain a motion for deferral. Yeah, Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Gates. Uh, all those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Uh, it should be noted that our Director of Finance has taken ill and we did have it on the agenda for anyone that's following and, uh, will, uh, hope for his, um, speedy recovery. Ratification of Committee of the Whole and ratification of in-camera, Counselor Ian Oni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following items would be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Committee of the Whole Committee. The Committee of the Whole minutes of January 17th and 31st, 2011 be approved. Under reports, MW 2011-09, the front-end bill, bin collection for multi-residential buildings. That staff be directed to confirm its agreement with the region's recommendation to extend the front-end bin collection service to eligible multi-residential properties in the city of Niagara Falls for one-year period effective March 1st, 2011, in accordance with the proposal from Modern Landfill, Inc. Under TS 2011-11, Portage Road Speed Control Review, that two speed humps be installed on Portage Road between Mayfair Drive and Stanford Green Drive. And under TS 2011-12, Transit Rerouting Ad-Hoc Advisory Committee, that the council approve the establishment of a Transit Rerouting Ad-Hoc Advisory Committee for the purpose of developing a comprehensive routing and rescheduling implementation plan and that myself be appointed as Chair for the committee and the second member be appointed when council makes their appointments for the various committees for the current term. And I so move.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Ian Oni, seconded by Counselor Morocco. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, just before we do, there are some in-camera recommendations to ratify from our January 31st and I'll ask the clerk to please read them.
Uh, yes, few items of your worship, uh, for those who remember after the January 31st council meeting, council moved to, uh, meet in-camera. Uh, as a result of that meeting, number one, that there be continued support from Station 2 on initial alarm responses to high-risk occupancies 24 hours per day. Number two, that the volunteer service level within the Village of Chippewa and other volunteer districts be discussed with those affected residents and other stakeholders at a public meeting. Number three, that the city immediately undertake a station location study with a qualified consultant. Estimated cost, $50,000. Number four, that an active recruitment for additional volunteers in all areas and in particular, the Station 4 area be carried out to increase the volunteer complement and assist and response time. Number five, that a new training officer be hired to initially concentrate on volunteer training needs at Stations 4, 5 and 6. Point number six, that a further review of the situation be carried out within six to eight months pending the completion of the fire, of the master fire plan and the station location study. Number seven, that in the interim, should the situation continue to deteriorate, the fire chief report back to council in a timely manner. And lastly, number eight, that any decision to hire additional full-time suppression personnel be deferred until such time as the master fire plan and the station location study are complete. And council has had an opportunity to consider these reports.
Okay. Can I have a mo, a motion to receive the in-camera? Yes, Counselor Maves? Motion received, seconded by Counselor Carrio. Any discussion? Counselor Ian Oni?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I want it understood that I voted against that in-camera, so I will vote against that tonight, um, with, with the understanding that there were two reports handed to us. I preferred the other report as opposed to this one, so I voted opposed to this.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Morocco?
Please also make it noted that I was opposed to it as well.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? All those in favor? Hold them up, please, okay. And opposed? Okay, thank you very much. What is the wish of the council on the consent agenda? Counselor Carrio?
I'll move all two items.
All two items, seconded by Counselor Maves. All those in favor? Okay. Uh, lastly, clerk, if there are, advise if there's any additional bylaws or amendments to the bylaws?
No additional bylaws.
Okay, thank you. Motion introduce the bylaws, Counselor Pietrangelo, seconded by Counselor Carrio. All those in favor? Okay.
Uh, by, bylaws 2011-18 through to 2011-25, be read a first time.
Motion by Counselor Pietrangelo to have them read a second and third time, seconded by Counselor Carrio. All those in favor? Okay, do we, do we have any new, uh, resistible bylaws?
We'll pass them one more time. Second, we'll pass them a second and third time. Just announce that.
Okay.
But, uh, 2011-18 to 2011-25, be read a second and third time and pass.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so we've got them passed. New business? Yes, Counselor Wing?
I actually have three items. The first is, um, to direct staff to look at and report back on the policy related to cash and lieu of parking. We discussed it earlier this evening, but I didn't put my motion on the floor then, so I'll make that motion now.
Okay. Do we have that, Mr. Clerk? Okay, we've got a motion by Counselor Wing to reexamine the parking bylaw in the city, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay.
Okay, and, uh, the second and the third, uh, both deal with, uh, private members. Bill was introduced last week in the House of Commons. Uh, one was from, uh, Conservative MP, another was, the other was, uh, an NDP MP. The first one, I'll just do them in alphabetical order. The first one is Bill C1, I'm sorry, 618. And, uh, it's proposing that, uh, the sale and import of products made from dog or cat fur be prohibited. And, uh, you know, both of these actually deal with consumer protection. This one, the thrust is, uh, to let consumers be aware of what they're buying and what the fur fiber content in products actually, uh, consists of. So there, there would be full disclosure of what this fur fiber is. So, and, uh, the, I actually have the, there are flip sides of, uh, the National Post, uh, from Friday of last week and it's noted, uh, in the Post that several jurisdictions have already banned cat and dog skin products, including Australia, Switzerland, the United States and the European Union. So my first, uh, resolution is, uh, support for Bill C618 and, uh, that, uh, we circulate it to all Canadian municipalities. If you wanna do them, I can go through the other one as well, if you wanna do them together.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. But, yeah, the second one is...
Support the fur.
Okay, the second one is Bill C621 and, uh, it's, uh, to amend the Broadcasting Act so that, uh, it would require broadcasters to make sure the volume of commercials is consistent with, uh, programs they accompany. So you don't, you have them at a consistent volume and not the commercials suddenly blasting. And, uh, again, similar rules exist in both the United States and the United Kingdom. So I'll include that with the first motion. So it's, uh, support for both, uh, C618 and C621.
Okay, fair enough. We have motion by Counselor Wing, seconded by Counselor Ian Oni.
How's he?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Uh, Counselor Ian Oni?
Thank you. I'm not gonna threaten to make my dog into mittens anymore. Okay, um, we, we've had such a big buildup of snow in the last little while and I know that our, our guys, our road crews have been out and they've done a great job on that. I'm doing such a good job on that, they're creating problems at the schools. I've had a number of emails in regards to the snowbanks that are building up, creating sight hazards for the schools and parents dropping off their kids cannot drop their kids off on the kiss and ride side or the side that they have available parking on because they can't let their kids out on the snowbank. But I did get a, an email and a call from a lady and a gentleman from Hexhamer School. They thought we had fixed the problem. Um, that it was chaos again the other day. At some point, the bus driver had to get out and yell at the cars to please move because there's not enough, uh, room to get the cars through. What are, what are our three to Mr. Holman? What's our staff doing in regards to things like this? Because when the moms are calling you from cellphones, um, it's getting pretty chaotic and it's getting pretty chaotic for the parents who are letting their kids out on the wrong side of the road because they can't get out in the snowbank. I know you're damned if you do a good job, you're damned if you don't, but it's, it's in front of the schools that it's becoming problematic.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, the problem really is related to parking and it's really an issue that the school boards have to work with. It's not something we're gonna resolve this winter, but it's something that needs to be properly constructed in front of the school so that, that the buses have, uh, ample location. Uh, I know in some cases, uh, we've been asked to clear off sidewalks and we see vehicles parking on sidewalks. That's really not the intent here. What we're trying to do is make it, there's also some issues too with communication with the parents who are stopping in no parking zones and loading zones to drop their children off. I appreciate the fact that it's maybe not safe to drop them off in certain locations because of the snowbanks, but we really have, uh, no options other than pulling the snow out of there. I'm not sure that that's the city's responsibility. I think the school boards have a larger role to play here and it's something that we have to work with them on. Uh, unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to resolve a lot of these issues. Um, we'll be kind of hit and miss between now and the end of, of this winter, but I think our staff's doing a good job to try and address the, uh, the most urgent concerns.
Counselor Ian Oni?
Thank you. And on the same vein from the same complainant, uh, they, they were having a problem with the fact that the construction has been deferred to the warmer weather between Dunn and McLeod and that that sidewalk had not been, um, open for people to walk on. I, I don't even know if it's gravel or what it is at this point. Uh, but people were walking on the road on Drummond between Dunn and McLeod and the kids going into school were walking on the road between Dunn and McLeod. Was it recently, uh, snow cloud?
Um, I believe the vehicles were there this morning, uh, removing some of the snow, at least creating a path. Because of the, uh, the timing of construction, the sidewalk was not completed last year, so there are sections of sidewalk that are missing and our equipment, uh, is not able to, to manage the, the volume of snow there. We've opened up a path to at least give, uh, students an opportunity to walk in that area instead of, uh, on the road. It's not completely, uh, uh, safe, uh, but it's better than walking on the road and we'll continue to monitor the situation and do our best.
Okay, thank you. And also, I guess after tonight, we're supposed to get the mild week, so hopefully that'll help a little bit with, uh, some of the snow issues that we're dealing. Uh, Counselor Gates?
Yeah, Mayor, Jim, uh, just real quick to Carolyn's point, I, I too read the, the emails. Uh, I think the, uh, staff has done a tremendous job on, uh, not only taking care of our streets, but also in this situation. Uh, the email that I read, the complaint was complaining about on the Sunday and the crews were already there by, uh, by Monday and that situation was rectified, uh, before the kids had to go to school today. So, uh, I wanna say the same as Carolyn. I think our crews are doing a good job and any of the complaints that I see that are coming across, uh, through emails, uh, they're being handled in a, uh, extremely quick way. So congratulations to your staff, doing a good job.
Absolutely. Staff are doing an outstanding job. And, uh, as someone said earlier, damned if you do, damned if you don't. I mean, they plow them and then the windrows, which is the bottom of the driveway, gets jammed in and then we're getting calls, you know, "I can't shovel it, it's too heavy." So the solution we're trying to come up with is let's build this snow buddies program. Let's encourage, uh, especially at the school level, they need their volunteer hours. This will help them qualify it for community service. Even some people that are maybe, uh, retired or, you know, a little bit, it's just casual, uh, you don't have to knock yourself out, but it would certainly help with some of these snow challenges that we have. Counselor Wing?
I wonder if we might suggest that the, um...
I wonder if we might suggest that the high schools send students who need community hours to their feeder schools to clear the snow from in front. You know, that way, they're helping themselves, and the kids are getting the hours they need.
Yeah, actually, the grade eights, I was told by the school board, grade eights have to get their volunteer hours now, too. It's not quite as much as high school, so it's another opportunity, you know? Yes, Councilor Morocco?
Your worship, I was just going to say, Jim, I hear someone saying that, but anyway, your worship. I won't point any fingers, Councilor Gates, but anyway, just under some new business there, I want to just let everyone know that the Hospital Foundation is actually going to go under a campaign to address the fact that all monies that we get for any equipment is actually donated by the residents. So with everyone and all the issues with the hospital, and around the hospital issues, I just want to make it clear, and they've asked me to just address this once in a while at council, that we do not receive any federal or provincial money for equipment at our hospitals. So I just want to make that clear. And I know that just recently, the Association of Firefighters did make a very generous donation to equipment, so I'd like to thank them.
Yeah, please keep donating to the Hospital Foundation. It has nothing to do with the NHS, you know, that, you know, we definitely want to separate the two. Councilor Thompson?
Yes, we received, Mayor, a report from the region, Public Works, regarding the extension of Thorl Stone Road into the Gale Center. This probably should be certainly made public, that some people are going to be very unhappy about the fact that the construction is not going to be commenced until well into 2012. The other part of the report that is concerning, do we have any idea what the ramifications financially are going to be with respect to this extension of the roadway? Is it all regional? Is the municipality involved in the construction of the environmental assessment, and what costs are being involved here?
Yeah, no, it's a great question. That's why I made sure that report, I received it, the region, I want everyone to get what I had, and I was clearly disappointed, because we originally were told June of this year, and now it's not going to be, because I, when I looked at the capital allocation, I realized they're not planning to do it this year. I was pretty disappointed, but great question we can ask staff. Is this regional? Is the city participating?
Mr. Mayor, the road costs are the regions. There will be some servicing and sidewalks that fall under our jurisdiction that we'll be responsible for, and we're waiting for the final design to be approved and the estimates. We'll be factoring that into our capital forecast for our requisite share.
So the EA and the land acquisition and the road construction are all regional?
That's correct.
Okay, that's great. But disappointing, 2012. Also, and I don't expect anybody has had the opportunity to read this, but the financial statements for Holco are here, and have been handed out. Holco is Niagara Peninsula Energy, and the council is the Holco Board, and I'd just like to mention that, to bring that to your attention, and ask if the clerk could look into the resolution by the City of Windsor, supporting a resolution to the government's indicating that heating and electricity costs, because of the economy and the difficulty some people are experiencing with respect to the recession, that these be exempt from the harmonized tax. And if you could do that at the next meeting, maybe we could endorse that resolution, and see if we can ease some of the pressure on some of the people who are suffering during this severe winter period.
Absolutely, it's a necessity. Yeah, I agree.
The final thing, I understand you had a lot of success with the NHS, but you didn't have too much success with the Mid Peninsula Corridor. I understand that that's, they think that that's still moving ahead. I don't, and I certainly won't be around here when, if, if they ever go ahead with this. But I would, it just baffles me why somebody from the City of Niagara Falls, representing this community, would be there bringing a resolution in support of the Mid Peninsula Corridor. I'd like to give you this article regarding the Mid Peninsula Corridor, and give a copy to all members of council, and what somebody else, other than myself, thinks about the Mid Peninsula Corridor. A billion three, when the provincial government doesn't have any money. This is actually a very good article, and attacks right at the very idea of this highway crossing all the farmlands and all of the properties, to take people from Hamilton to the Fort Erie Bridge, and bypass all the economies and the businesses and the job opportunities that we have here. So I haven't finished with that, and that's a great article. I hope everybody will read it.
Well, it's great, appreciate that. That's from one of the local papers here, Mr. Clerk? I, yeah, I did, I brought forward a friendly amendment to that motion. I asked that we only utilize existing roadways, as we had suggested in our resolution here, and they never accepted it as a friendly amendment. They accepted it as an unfriendly amendment. So it caused...
You said it nicely.
I said it really nice, actually.
Very professional.
Very professional. I didn't say pretty please, but I did say it nicely, and then Councilor Gates was there, he stayed for the whole night, he's a glutton for punishment, but he stuck around, and it caused a lot of debate, and it was twisting and turning, and then finally, I realized it was going nowhere, because there was more amendments and more, it was getting out of, it was a snowball going downhill, so I pulled my, I said, "I'll just simply vote against it," and I pulled it out, and then they finally deferred the whole thing. So I'm sure it won't come up until the next meeting. So definitely a hot topic for regional council, I'm sure. Not as hot as the NHS, but still hot. Councilor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, I also wanted to talk about the letter that we received from the region, and to me, I find this very frustrating. I feel very duped, in the sense that just in the fall time, before the election, when we were talking about this exact entrance, we were told that it was going to happen in the middle of this year.
We're back to the Gale Center.
Exactly. And then, and then now to find out in this letter that the risk assessment that the region was responsible for making sure was submitted, wasn't even submitted at that time, that they told us that the road would be completed in the middle of this year. So I don't understand how they could tell us that the road would be completed when the risk assessment wasn't even filed, and they know that the risk assessment takes minimum one year. Very frustrating, Your Worship, to receive this type of information, because, I'll leave it at that. The other part of it that I find very frustrating is, every time that I go to the Gale Center, people always ask me, and now I've emphatically told people, "Oh yeah, the road will be here by middle of 2011," and now I find out that it's not going to be here. And I don't know that the story has ever been told, really, what the responsibilities of the city was, and what the responsibilities of the region was, and we were supposed to go out and have a risk assessment filed on the lands that we were utilizing, and we did that. And the region was supposed to go out and file a risk assessment for the lands that they were going to use, and they never did that. And that's, and that's the crux of the holdup, and I don't think that the story has ever been told. So I find it very frustrating as well.
Maybe we can get a comment from our Director of Municipal Works? You know, seems like to us, and maybe correct us if we're wrong, has the ball been dropped somewhere along the way? And is there anything we can do to help speed it up? Mr. Holman?
I'm wiping egg off my face as well, because I've told just as many people that we could look forward to having the roadway come through there. Unfortunately, it's, you know, the ball is in their court, and it's really up to them to, you know, to move the project forward. We can lend them our support, I guess, and encourage them to work more diligently at it, but the fact of the matter is, it's really in their hands.
Well, I can tell you that I'm aware of it, and I'm there now, so I'll be lobbying strongly on our behalf, to make sure that we get that done sooner than later, because it's, it's, what a shame. You have to drive all the way around the Gale Center to get to the Gale Center, and then, if you got to drive down Stanley Avenue, as you pointed out, Councilor Peter Angelo, I mean, it's like driving, driving on Mars. I mean, that road is so bumpy, and the fact that they're not looking at doing that for, I think, another three years, it's unbelievable. It's in such rough shape, I can't believe it hasn't made one of the top 10 lists.
Yeah, and I mean, I can't, I can't fault our own staff, because I just asked a question two weeks ago, of how much roadwork was going to be done, and I mean, the information that Mr. Holman had for us was that, you know, it was going to be done all the way up to the, to the former railway, to the former railway track. So I think he was under the impression, as we were, that the works were still going to be done this year, and to find out in the letter that the risk assessment wasn't even filed, when we were given that information, is very frustrating.
Yeah, it's maddening. Thank you. Councilor Maves?
Yeah, I think on that same vein, I believe a couple of years ago, I asked the same question to Mr. Holman, and I guess he was assured, and we were assured, that it was going to be done this year. I'm wondering if there's some way we can get our other regional councillors, the other Bart Maves, Barbara Greenwood, and...
That's the quarter, she should be working.
The other Bart Maves.
Waiting the letter.
And Selena Velpati.
And Selena, if we can get those on board, and perhaps put some pressure on.
I know they very much support this roadway as well, and you're right, we've got to work collectively to get it, that makes a lot of sense. Yes, Councilor Iannoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm at the point where I don't think that anything we do is going to help now, because if, if I understand, it doesn't matter, it's the ministry, the ball is now kicked up even higher to the Ministry of Environment. I was more upset that they didn't file the risk assessment to the end of December. Like, at what point did they misunderstand us, at the 30 other motions we sent to the region, to say how crucial it was to service the arena? I mean, we clearly have absolutely no sway in this now, that it's sitting at the Ministry of Environment, because they have to follow A to Z, and they cannot do anything else but do that. So, I mean, we can send motion after motion, we're not going to move them any quicker. But I'd like to know who dropped the ball in regards to SciTech not applying? If I'm not mistaken, the report says SciTech applied for the risk assessment in December 210. Well, who was getting the information from SciTech then, that it would be there in June? I think there's something wrong with this whole picture.
I agree, I agree. It's a real shame. You spent almost $40 million, and you would expect the roadway to be completed.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, is there any other questions? Nope. Councilor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, on another unrelated matter, I know that some time ago, Casino Niagara had extended their lease with the province, and when they did extend their lease, I know that the province, OPG, along with FMC, was looking at rebranding Casino Niagara, and also doing a large advertising campaign for the casino. And I just never heard anything more about that. I didn't know whether or not you knew anything, or whether anyone in the staff knew anything.
That's actually a good question. That's been, I think, a year now? Since that happened? I don't know, maybe we could ask the CIO if he has any comment on that?
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. And council, recall that there was a 15-year extension to the lease that happened late last year, and even at the press conference that was held, there were promises made by OLG that there was going to be a revamping of the site. They were going to do more marketing, dust off their master plan, see what would happen. As far as we've seen, nothing. In fact, the, Mr. Fellasay and I were talking about this this morning, there was a committee looking, a two-casino committee, that was very active in pushing that along. He's now looking at getting that group together, to see if they can't go now and lobby OLG, to see if they can push for the investments that they had talked about. So that committee will get back up and running, the mayor will be involved in that, along with some of the stakeholders. So we'll get that group back together, and hopefully get back to the OLG. In fact, we're meeting with some of the OLG reps later this week, and we'll certainly raise that issue as well.
Do you need a motion to support that?
No, we can just take the direction, and that's something we would have been doing anyway, but we'll make sure it's on the front burner for this meeting later this week.